All right. Whoa. Sorry about that. Is this unusually loud?
It sounds like it.
It seems.
It's unusually quiet in here, too.
Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the board meeting tonight. Appreciate y'all coming out and being a part of it. I guess we can just jump right in and call the meeting to order. And first thing we need to do is talk about the agenda. Let's see, is that better? Is that better? Not quite as loud? Okay. All right. Dr. Rollins, is there anything on the agenda we need to change or?
The agenda would stand as presented, Mr. President.
Great.
Can I make a motion that we accept the agenda as presented?
Second. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Cook, a second by Mr. Williams to accept the agenda as submitted. Any further discussion about that? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We've all had a copy of the minutes from last month's meeting. Are there any changes that need to be made to those?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay. Second. We have a motion by Mrs. McFetrich, a second by Mr. O'Enby to approve the minutes from last month's meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This is the time of the meeting when we allow patrons to come before us and talk about anything they like to talk about. All we ask is that you, when you come forward, you introduce yourself and tell us where you're from. And please keep it to a minimum and understand we can't act on anything this evening. Is there anybody out there that would like to address the board at this time? All right, we're just gonna roll on then. Let's see here. Did I miss the pledge somewhere?
That's out of me.
Okay, all right.
We'll ask Chance to come forward and then we'll introduce him properly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll just hang out there.
Chance, we're very glad to have you with us this evening. It's my privilege to recognize you, to introduce you. I wish you had the opportunity to share what we were looking at earlier. This young man is quite a robotics innovator and he and his team are getting ready to compete on the big stage, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
This is Chance Krowchuk. He's a senior from Springdale High School. His mom is Crystal Krowchuk. Chance is pursuing an international baccalaureate diploma. He's completed four advanced placement courses and three international baccalaureate courses. That's just during his sophomore and junior year and he's currently in five IB courses, including a course in English and IB Spanish. You're a busy guy, aren't you?
Very much so.
That's for sure. He previously completed taking Mandarin Chinese. He's taking AP Physics C, and I'm gonna need you to talk about that, mechanics and AP Calculus AB. We're getting pretty mathematical, I think, aren't we? Am I on the right track here?
It's rough.
It's all math. It seems like it sure is. Chance is also a member of the Tech Hogs robotics team.
Yes, sir.
We're really proud of you and glad to have you here this evening. Our board would welcome any comments you want to share with them in the audience.
Start this off. A lot of things I've done have been made possible just by the fantastic support I've had, like from the school district administration. So I thank you very much for that. I mean, a lot of things that I've done, I couldn't have done without your help or your support. The IB diploma SHS, I can't, I can't stress the importance of that program enough. It's done fantastic things both for me personally and for several of my friends and colleagues. That's all I got to say. You have any questions?
After high school.
After high school. College, hopefully. I'm looking at 10 of them, including the U of A over in Fayetteville. And I have high hopes.
So you don't have a preferred number one if you could have it? If that's what you do?
Obviously, with robotics and the class, I'm interested in engineering, so you have to look at Stanford, Caltech, MIT. But, you know, the U of A has a good engineering program and it's affordable. And a lot of times, taking cost considerations is very important. So it's, it kind of depends on scholarship money for me.
You're a junior?
I'm a senior this year.
That's awesome.
What made you take Mandarin Chinese?
I lived in China for eight years, so coming over is kind of a natural thing to do.
It's exciting. And what's the next step with the robotics?
We've been to Worlds twice and we've taken 22nd, just over 7,000 teams. So let's, you know, shoot for top 10 finish.
When is that?
Our first competition is in November and then the Worlds tournament takes place in April. So it'll, it's a long season.
So what do you do for fun when you're not doing fast work and robotic stuff? I mean, what's, what's your passion besides that? Do you have a hobby or?
I've got a couple hobbies. I'm trying to restore a truck right now. Weather permitting, my family likes to spend a lot of time on the water, so a lot of wakeboarding, a lot of surfing by the boat. It's, when I do have time, which is pretty rarely.
What is your truck?
It's a 1963 Chevy C-10, Step Side and Long Bed.
Step Side. Who? Do you know what a Step Side is?
I have no idea.
Have you invited Mr. Jinks down to operate the robot?
Not yet, but if you'd like to stop by, we'd love to help him.
I would like to stop by. We'll go together. How's that said? Well, it looked like a real work of art, really.
Thank you, sir. In a lot of ways, it is.
I think that's right. That could go a long ways in your competition, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate you being here. Your parents here?
My mom is, yeah.
Thanks, Mom. Good job. All right. Well, congratulations. I hope everything goes great for you in the college search and you get what you want.
Thank you, sir.
We'll have to see you back after Worlds.
Yeah.
It'll be a long time.
Mr. Hutchinson, I think all of us would like to congratulate you on being re-elected to serve another term on the school board.
Thank you.
And again, I think for all of us, probably all who know your work, we want to thank you for the leadership you provided to our school board and certainly the support you've given me over a number of years. We appreciate you very, very much.
Thank you.
I know, Board, the first item of business that we need to officially conduct is the reelection of officers for this new year. So I'll leave that item up to the board for handling. But again, Randy, thank you for all you've done for all of us.
You bet.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the nomination of officers of the Springdale School Board for the 2017-18 term. For president, I would nominate Mr. Kevin O'Enby. For vice president, Ms. Michelle Cook. And for secretary treasurer, Ms. Kathy McFetrich.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. Dotson for Kevin O'Enby to be president, Michelle Cook to be vice president, Kathy McFetrich to be secretary treasurer. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Now, before I give up my seat to Mr. O'Enby, I want to say thank you. I've enjoyed being president for the last two years. Appreciate you guys giving me the confidence to be up, be here and do this. And I want to thank Dr. Rollins. He said a while ago that we've known each other for a long time and that's, that's true. I met him before my eighth grade year, the summer before my eighth grade year, back in the early 80s.
That's a long time.
Long time ago, 30-plus years. So our relationship has just grown and gotten better over the years. And being president, you get to, you get to know Dr. Rollins even better when you're the president, because he calls you when there's a problem. He has no qualms about picking up the phone and saying, hey, we gotta talk. So I've gotten to know Dr. Rollins on a very personal level as well as superintendent level over the last couple of years, better than I ever knew in the first six or seven years I was on the board. So I do appreciate that and I'll treasure that forever. And I'll, I'm gonna give up my seat to Kevin, to Mr. O'Enby, and I'm sure he'll do just as, as well or better than I did, so.
Well, Randy, if I can just also thank you. I think you've done an outstanding job and represented us very well.
Thank you.
I was always so proud when you were up there representing the board and you've done an outstanding job.
Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Rollins. Thank you, Randy.
Board, let's, let's begin with a proclamation presented by our governor as the principles of our state are recognized. Virtually every group I've ever spoken to about quality schools starts something like this. The variables that are so important that we continue to extend and deepen every day that make up great schools always start with great teachers. And I know our principals would, would recognize that as well. And then I always say, Kevin, followed very closely by great building leadership, a strong curriculum and quality partnerships that we continue to try to grow and develop. So the month of October is being recognized as a celebration of the principles of our state and beyond. So I'm gonna need to hold this up close, I think, to read this, but I, I do, I do want to share it with our audience and I know the board has a copy. But this is a proclamation from our state, signed by our governor, Asa Hutchinson. To all to whom these presents come greetings. Whereas the state of Arkansas has declared the month of October 2017 as National Principals' Month in coordination with the efforts of the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the American Federation of School Administrators, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals, working with the US Congress to designate National Principals' Month and the resolution thereof. And whereas the vision, dedication, and determination of a principal provides the mobilizing force behind any school reform effort. And whereas principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special program administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with the education and development of young people, the most valuable resource. And we've got a lot of principals in the room. Where are y'all? Please stand up if you would. I don't know if they're that good or not, but let's play they are. We're so very proud of each of you and we thank you so much. I'm gonna go on with this, but that was, that was a mouthful. Whereas principals will play a vital role in successful implementation of the Every Student Succeeds Act. Whereas principals and the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards, develop mission statements, and set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence. And whereas the Arkansas Association of Elementary School Principals and Arkansas Association of Middle Level Administrators honors such exemplary elementary and middle level public, private, and independent school leaders committed to serving students from pre-kindergarten to grade eight in their profession. And whereas the Arkansas Association of Secondary School Principals recognizes outstanding middle-level junior high and high school principals who have succeeded in providing high-quality learning opportunities for students as well as their exemplary contribution to the profession. Now, I therefore, Asa Hutchinson, Governor of the State of Arkansas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and by the laws of the state of Arkansas, do hereby proclaim October 2017 as National Principals' Month in Arkansas. Thank y'all very much. Great teachers, great principals. Those are those that key to work with these great students. And in partnership with the families, that's what we're all about, isn't it, y'all? Thank you so much, each and every one of you. We're very, very proud of you. Okay, I know there's celebrations going on around the district and in our schools to again, say thank you honestly to what I believe is the best building-level administrative team in our state. We see the, the work that goes on in our district at every meeting and obviously it's led by these phenomenal building leaders. Okay. Mr. President, one of the things that we've all come to enjoy, and I know you and I have had a lot of conversations about focus sessions and how we want to get our leaders, whether it be students or principals, but especially our students, in front of the board demonstrating their learning. As you know, we built this school district over time on that staircase to educational excellence. Tonight, we're building on what we presented last month, learning for all, or excuse me, teach them all. And tonight, it's learning for all. And we want to see the kids as they share this work. Ms. Byford, if you'll come forward, I want to thank you for being our leader and connector and facilitator and all those things in terms of helping make this presentation possible. This was Allison Byford, our Westwood Elementary school president.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. As Dr. Rollins said, we're gonna take some time tonight to focus on the second step in our staircase, which is learning for all. I have to admit, when we gathered to plan our presentation for tonight, the initial reaction from all of us was, well, what are we gonna talk about? I mean, this is what we do. Learning for all has been in our mantra for as long as most of us can remember. But what has evolved over the years perhaps is our relentless pursuit of personalizing the education of every student we serve. We have over 22,000 sets of very unique needs and our goal is to meet each one of those. Tonight, we're gonna share just a handful of the ways our schools work to give each individual a personalized experience throughout his or her career in our district. Tonight, we'll explore personalization in our curriculum, in our assessment, extended school activities, and just about everything in between. So I believe that you have cards in front of you. Be, just please write your questions on those cards and we will be sure and answer them at a later time. So we're gonna go ahead and get started with Westwood Elementary.
Hi, my name is Sydney Alumbarger. I'm in fifth grade. I have attended Westwood since kindergarten. I'm going to talk to you about how Westwood gives a choice and how I have experienced it. First, having a choice at your school is important. It is important because kids learn differently and without the choice, kids might not understand what they're learning. When kids don't have the choice, these different styles of learning, some kids might not understand what's happening. It's also important to have a choice on what, what you, we are learning. If we don't have a choice, then we might not enjoy what we are learning and it doesn't stick with us. I want to share with you how I've experienced it throughout the years and throughout the unit, how we organize ourselves. During the first unit in kindergarten, we got to make our own shop. We, we chose the shop from a real shop in the community. My group chose Panda Express. We got to decide how we, how we wanted it to look and how we were going to plan it out, plan it out. We also got, got to decide what we wanted to be and how we would contribute. I chose to be a waitress. Next year, we got to make our own shop with our own idea. We made our own community. We called ourselves the Knowledgeables. Everyone got to make their own shop and with the money we earned, we got to spend it on either services or goods in different classes. This particular year, I chose to work alone and my business provided a service. I decided to teach people how to draw giraffes. It turned out pretty good. In second grade, we made a mini model of a city. We got into small groups and made decisions on what buildings we should put in there. In the small groups, we made the buildings and decided how we were gonna communicate which eat one, which each building meant. At the, at the end of every unit, we reflect. This year, we reflected on what we should have added to make the city better, to, to fit the citizens' needs and wants. For third grade, we had field day. We decided what games we wanted to put in it and how to set it up or its design. Then we also decided what different rules we wanted to have for the games. We also had to think about the different resources because we couldn't really go out and buy anything, so we ended up buying a lot of stuff from the gym. This unit ended up, ended with us actually having field day and everybody came out and played, played all the games. In fourth grade, we got to decide how we were going to show an example of a system. My group made a solar system. We were, we had to work together to figure out how we would present it and how to make, and how to make the presentation. In the end, we got to decide how we were going to make the, how to make our presentation stick in our audience's brains. So we made a cahoot. It's kind of like a quiz on the internet. It's pretty fun. At the end of every unit, we are able to go further into our research and keep doing it at home. That, that gives us the choice to, to make it where, to make it something we would remember This year, we decided which entrepreneur we wanted to research. I chose to do one on William T. Dillard. He was the creator of Dillard's. To make our slides better, we decided which information was the, was the best and bullet to do on our slides. The picture you're seeing right now is our rubric. We write the rubric as a class. We decided what's, what's expected of us. And in the end, Westwood gives choices throughout the year and throughout our subsidies. This lets us decide how to make our learning better. Thank you.
Sydney?
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Ryan and I'm the principal at Walker Elementary. At Walker, we are personalizing the learning for all students, staff, and even our parents. One way we are accomplishing this goal is within our reading units of study. During Unit 1, our fifth-grade students have been working together in book clubs. Students in book clubs read the same book, a book chosen by their group, which is personalized, and share with their individual learning with each other by discussing thoughts and ideas about the text as they go along. This model gives everyone authentic opportunities to practice spoken language while also allowing for learners to practice high-level thinking work and language that leads to learning for all. In this video, you will see students in a book club and they will be sharing about their experience reading the text. You will also see at the end how one student takes her learning home to her mom and dad. As you watch, look at all the sticky notes in the books. This is jotting. This is what students do as they read and think independently to prepare for the group discussion time. During the discussion time, you will hear high-level thinking around the character as they work to understand and process the text as a group.
The amount of reading I do every night has changed a lot since fourth grade to fifth grade because with these book clubs, now I do more reading because everybody, you don't wanna get spoilers, just like Ethan said, but also I read more because now it's more fun because everybody else can bring something different to the book club. So if I didn't think of something this way, somebody else thought of it that way and it makes.
Thirty yards away in this 20-inch hole, that's all he does. And he does it until he like makes it five times in a row. Like he is.
And that goes along with.
Yeah. He's done it till like night, like nine.
When the moon's already shining. Yeah. That goes along with.
Some like hot sun to the moon. Like hot sun to the moon and it'll just be the porch light that'll shine it to hold him. And sometimes the moon.
And what you said there goes along with my trait for Nate and it's called, and I said Nate is determined because of that.
Uh huh. Yeah, and he was like, and he's willing to like keep doing it through until he can make it.
Yeah.
Because like he stays out there for a long time. It's like, oh, my homework can wait. This is the number one thing now. Because I, I think that like he thinks that if he makes it one time, that could just be luck. So he has to make like five times in a row to actually have it. Yeah. It's, it's, my theory is that he, when, once, whenever he gets on the Patriots field, he's gonna feel all the eyes watching him, all the cameras around him looking at him. And he, and that's, and that's when like the nerves is gonna hit him and he's gonna get like.
Honestly, now that he is, he has like bounced back up from being so nervous and now that he is doing better, I think he actually might.
And like I feel like if I wasn't in a book club, I would not be as far as I am now because like, I like reading, but like it's, you know, hard to actually read because, you know, there's better things to do than reading.
Yeah.
And then, and so if I wasn't in a book club, I'd be like, uh, it can be tomorrow. Then if I was.
Um, I have a book club with my mom and my dad and I wanna start one with my grandma and grandfather if I ever get the chance, but I like it because it gives me, my mom is usually focused on Tyler a lot because he's going to a new school and he needs to try out new things. So it's between eight and nine where it's just me and my mom time and I like that. And then nine to nine, nine o'clock to like nine fifteen is when I do it with my dad. And we're reading Beauty and the Beast with my mom and The Enemy Above with my dad.
So personalized learning extends to the teachers as well. The reading units of study are written so that even our most experienced reading teachers are growing and learning professionally in our PLCs. Our teachers with so many different experiences and titles are all learning through this process of implementation of the reading units of study. When students make groups for their parents and make sure that choose the books that they feel their parents will enjoy, students are personalizing the learning at home for their mom and dads. So, learning for all includes students, parents, and teachers. All means all. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Helen Tyson Middle School.
Hello, my name is Kennedy Dykes, reporting from Helen Tyson Middle School, where there's lots of personalized learning going on. Let's take a look inside.
We are excited to be here representing Helen Tyson and I'm Stephanie Anderson, principal, and it's really my pleasure to have our ambassador from Helen Tyson, Ms. Kennedy Dykes, and she's really gonna talk to you about personalization.
Hello, my name is Kennedy Dykes. I'm in sixth grade at Helen Tyson Middle School. Join us in looking at how HTMS personalizes learning. As you can see in both pictures, we are building our connections with the community. In the first picture, we were able to work with Girl Who Code and Walmart. Through this opportunity, we were able to get hands-on STEM education as well as work with our community. In the second picture, community partners came to HTMS and worked with students on 3D printing. Students had the choice of which sessions they attended and they could pick what they printed. In these pictures, students are working together with peer-to-peer support. Students are working together on math and explaining it to each other. The other picture shows an image from our language academy and their reading circles. Students were sharing their reading goals and encouraging each other and holding each other accountable. In the next video, you can see students working together with peer-to-peer support.
How did you get the algebraic equation out and understand that?
So basically, from the first problem, for one table, you can have three kids. And then if you put this into a table, because on every side of the triangle, on the triangular table, you can have one person. So there's three people to one table. And then you add one more table and there would be four.
Yeah, about that.
And then it's three and five, four and six, and five and seven. So if you add one plus two equals three.
Oh, so it's basically the rule?
Yes. So X plus two equals Y. Sometimes it helps to hear from a variety of sources to learn, including help from teachers and from working with a partner. Students work and see the same problems differently. Fine arts classes also provide a Fine arts classes also provide another way to personalize learning. Hands-on experiences make learning fun and some students learn better that way. I actually got to make clay pots in art. We could personalize them and decorate them however we wanted to. Here, my friend Emerson and I are reading independently. I love to read and I love getting lost in a book. At HTMS, we get to choose what books we want to read at our reading level and we also get time to jot about our thinking. Our friends Will and Greg think HTMS does a great job personalizing learning. As you can see, there's lots of community learning, peer-to-peer learning, and individual learning. Kennedy Dykes, reporting for HTMS News.[644.37][644.37][applause] Thank you.
And I think personalizing for Kennedy because I think she's going to maybe be a broadcast journalist one of these days. And now we would like to transition to Harbor High School.
And she's so photogenic, too.
At Harbor High School, several years ago, about four, we began to see the changes in our demographics. In that conversation about what we need to do, learning for all was the focus. We changed our mission statement, which went to personalization immediately. How do you personalize for students? In the last four years, we've gained over 450 students in our school. So our structure has changed, but our mission has stayed the same and that's to empower students to personalize education. That is our goal, that's what we're doing. But it means for all students, not just for those who do school well. And so what Harbor High School has done is made commitment that learning for all means all.
Yeah, I see learning for all as just the opportunity for students to have a personalized learning experience and having that opportunity to choose the classes that they want and choose the activities and classes that versus to what they want to do as they get older and as they go into a career field.
Wherever the student is at, we as teachers got to make sure that we help them improve in that area. As a resource math teacher, I mean, I see every level that I can possibly think of. And so sometimes some strategies work better for others and sometimes they don't, you know? And so you've just got to find the right strategy for each kid.
Well, yeah, it depends on your teacher. They make it either a fun environment or they like have a different teaching skills for each and every one of us. Like, so if you're a visual learner, they would draw it. If you're a hands-on person, we have group activities. And if you're a writer, they would give you a paper to write on.
Building relationships with the students and finding out where they're coming from so that I know what they need to help them learn better.
I think that we try to give everybody an opportunity to be involved and, you know, that promotes school spirit if people are involved. And that's the biggest thing that probably a lot of high schools don't do anymore is they don't try to get everyone involved in something that makes them feel like that they want to get up and come to school every day.
The mission of Harbor High School is to empower students to personalize education.
The only thing I would add because Dr. Morley's made me is that what a privilege and honor it is to do our best work with you and your leadership every day for every kid in this district.
So you're saying that's what you relate to?
No, it is an honor to serve the students and the parents and the families. And it's all done with partnerships. So thank you for your leadership in our work.[863.81][863.81][applause]
So hopefully, as you saw tonight, we've gone well beyond differentiation. We are a community of learners, beginning in kindergarten and we are learning all through our grade levels and our staff is learning. We're learning at home and involve our families. We learn with peers and with our community. We provide a plethora of opportunities to not only empower our students, but to strengthen our community in all kinds of ways. Thank you for your time tonight and remember, if you have questions, just be sure and write them down and we'll be sure and continue the conversation. Very quickly, before I sit down, I would love for Sydney and Kennedy's parents to stand up and let us recognize you. Stand up.[913.04][913.04][applause] Parents, thank you very, very much for sharing your children with us and thank you all.
So a couple of comments. Excellent presentation. These focus sessions for the board continue to get better and better. Two really standout things, and it's really a tribute to the parents and then the job that you guys do as professionals, is the clarity and the confidence the kids had when they came up here. I mean, it kind of gives me chills because I don't know that I ever had that kind of confidence. I don't know that I have it today, sitting right here, talking to you right now. So you parents need to be really proud of what you're doing at home and then also what we're doing at school for the kids. So a shout out to you guys for that. I think that's awesome. So you two girls did a great job. Thanks to the four of you guys for your presentations. It was really easy to understand and puts it on layman's terms for us to connect with what you do every day. So we really appreciate that. Thanks for your time outside of your normal workday to come here and do this.
Thank you for having us.
That's important to us.
We love our schools and we love to talk about our schools and our students, so. And to second what you're saying, I was very impressed, too, just listening to Chance talk and how well-spoken and articulate our kids are, so it's refreshing.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Allison. All right, Ms. Plow.
I have two items to present to you today. The first, Dr. Slokum and I recently made a couple of trips to Littlerock to both the Charter authorizing panel and the State Board of Education to seek approval, official approval, to have seventh graders at the School of Innovation. Now, when you see in the agenda item, it may cause you a little bit of panic, but I want to explain why it says K-12 for the seventeen, eighteen school year. When the charter was written, it actually was written and approved to have K-12 beginning in eighteen, nineteen. It was written so you all would have that discretion to add grades as you saw fit. So what this does is gives you now the discretion to add grades as you see fit. The State Board and the Charter Panel, we were clear with them that there are no plans to expand to kindergarten at this time, that that would be a decision that you all would make and that you all have had discussions about sixth and seventh grade, but that's it. So in the future, instead of Dr. Slokum and I or whoever having to go for a several-month-long process to get official approval, you all now have that approval going forward. So there's approval for seventh grade now and then you've got discretion to add grades as you see fit going forward. We also asked for an official name change to the Don Tyson School of Innovation and that was, of course, approved unanimously. Does anyone have questions about that item?
We don't need any further action since...
No, just a report. And the second item does need official action. There, in your packet, you'll see a list of requests for out-of-district transfers. This month, we have twelve students who want to come into Springdale School District. They are coming, eight from Fayetteville, two from Huntsville, and two from Elkins. They're listed there. Some are sibling sets, so they may be combined in a single number in your list. And no students are requesting to leave Springdale this month. I'll be happy to answer any questions, so otherwise I'd ask you to approve that agenda item.
I'll make a motion to accept transfers. That's the first time I've gotten to do that in two years.
All right. Congratulations.
There we go.
Second.
Can we have a motion by Mr. Hudson and a second by Mrs. Cook? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Dr. Morley, if you'd come forward, please. Thank you so much. Board, we're on item F of the agenda.
You know that one of my favorite things to do is to brag on our children and on our teachers and tonight I get to brag on another teacher. Tara Hodge teaches children at Monitor Elementary and recently she was recognized for her efforts in STEM. One of the things she likes to do is start her lessons with the STEM project because she says that gets the kids involved. And she said even things like taking notes are not boring anymore. It teaches the kids things like teamwork and creative thinking and communication. Said some of her best designs have come from the students themselves. Some of the examples of things that she's done in her room was she had, the students make astronaut housing that has to withstand different planetary perils such as gravity, ultraviolet light, wind, or maybe mining chocolate chips out of cookies without destroying the cookie to demonstrate how engineers solve problems of human wants versus protecting environmental resources and designing trains that can safely conduct passengers. So it's that real-world kind of experiences that Ms. Hodge provides. On October ninth, in Branson, Missouri, Ms. Hodge was named the Max E. Lundquist Rising Star STEM Educator. It recognizes young enthusiastic educators that exemplify excellence and leadership in the field of STEM education. It recognizes initial contributions and future potential in young STEM educators. Let me present to you and introduce to you Ms. Tara Hodge.[1301.83][1301.83][applause]
Hi. I'm Tara Hodge.
Do you have questions?
Questions? Is there anything you'd like to know?
What spurs your interest so much in what you do for us?
In STEM? You know, it's funny, I'm married to a pharmacist and when I married him, he had, you know, a lot of science background and I knew nothing. And he bemoaned the fact and I came home from the university one day and said, you know, I signed up for this STEM endorsement and it stands for science and technology and engineering and math. And he just laughed hysterically because, I mean, literally, I did not understand how he plugged something in and the magic caretaker turned on. But I was artsy and I understood how to take materials and build them into something that worked. And once someone could put a concept with that, I totally understood it. And so it really turned on a lot of light bulbs for me in my later years and I'm really excited to do that for kids when they're young.
That's a great story.
Thanks.
Is he still laughing at you?
All the time. Probably somewhere right now, even though I'm not there.
We're proud of you and all your accomplishments and appreciate what you do for our school and our kids.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure and my privilege.
Thank you. Congratulations.[1383.48][1383.48][applause] Each month, I like to bring you an update on Springdale Reads. And, you know, if I had, I couldn't have asked for a better video than Ms. Ryan showed of the book club at Walker Elementary to talk about how those kids get together, they think, they read the book. And one of the things was shared with me in the last couple of weeks was a principal said a child kept interrupting a teacher as she was teaching about a book. And the teacher said, well, thank you, we're going to get to that, we're going to get to that. And finally, she said, what is it that you want to know? And the child said, when do we get to stop and jot about this? So you saw those kids and all their sticky notes and the stopping and jotting that they do. So our kids are learning about how to read a book, how to find things in it, and making those notes about it. So that's Springdale Reads. We continue to support our reading efforts. This Friday, we will have another day of reading and a culture of literacy for all of our teachers across the district. We prepare not just those in elementary course, K-5, all of our classroom teachers are learning more about reading, but we also include our art teachers and our music teachers and how can they take what we're learning about reading and apply it in their curriculum because they have curriculum that they teach as well. So we are doing that all the way pre-K through twelfth grade. Our secondary folks are working on a culture of literacy and that's what has been their focus all year long. So, reading pre-K through twelfth grade. One of the things we've brought to you before is that need for additional books. And I know Ms. McFetrich and I were talking a little while ago about a book that she and her grandson are reading and about how important it is for that child to have that next book to read so that when I finish that last page, I've got another book to pick up and read. One of the things that we noticed when we leveled our books, back at the big book dump, you remember we were talking about the book dump? One of the things we discovered was we did not have very many books that were appropriate for kindergartners to read. There were a lot of books that we could read to them, very pretty books, but they were actually written on a fourth or fifth grade level. But we needed books for our kids to read. So in honor of one of our finest kindergarten teachers ever in this district, Tita Rollins, a fund, a foundation has been started so that we can start by giving our kindergarten teachers $500 to purchase more books for their classroom libraries. So we're getting a lot of interest in this, we're raising a lot of money for this, so we're pretty excited about that possibility and what we can do for our kindergarten teachers. So I'll bring you more about Springdale Reads next month. Do you have questions? All right. The next thing on there talks about Forward Arkansas and as you know, Springdale is a Forward Arkansas community. One of the things that we are blessed to have by being a Forward Arkansas community is we have consultants who are coming alongside us. And I've gotten to know mainly two of our consultants pretty well in the last month or so and the work that they are doing behind the scenes for us, work to find out how can we connect with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library where we can give pre-K kids books, a book a month. How do we work on even bringing together our community to extend even farther our touch of readings, Springdale Reads? So tonight, one of our consultants is here and Celia, you want to come forward? This is Celia Swanson. She is one of our four consultants and I want her to talk with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morley, and it's really a privilege to be here to visit with you today. The Springdale community was selected out of five communities across the state of Arkansas to be designated as a Forward community. And the reasons for this particular school district to be selected was because of your culture, the economic and graphic, excuse me, geographic diversity in your school district, but also a lot of the innovation that was already happening here that was a privilege to see and something that we actually wanted to stretch and improve and hopefully adopt across the state of Arkansas to close the gaps in education preparation for the workforce and/or for higher education. And why did we designate Forward Communities? First of all, I love the quote in the middle, which says, "When schools, families, and communities work together to support learning, students tend to earn higher grades, attend school more regularly, stay in school longer, enroll in higher-level programs, and have better social skills." That in a nutshell talks about why we're trying to bring together all constituencies around what you all are doing in your school district and then share it with the rest of the state. So in just one sentence, Forward Communities are serving as demonstration models. Our intention would be to hone, document, and share across the state, replicating the most successful education and community partnerships across the state and ultimately, we hope across the country. I'm going to skip the next few. I do have a copy of this deck for each of you that you can refer to. But I want to talk about several of the programs and impact that Springdale School District has been delivering that were highlights for why you were selected as a Forward community. The first is Springdale Reads and this literacy of culture for families is quite unique and quite remarkable in what I've learned in just one month. Access to pre-K, the flexible and blended STEM learning... Access to pre-K, the flexible and blended STEM learning that's happening at the Don Tyson School of Innovation, and then a progressive strategy driven throughout the district. And I can tell you in my visits to different schools in your system, there is an absolute drumbeat of commonality with the principals, with the teachers, and what I hear from Dr. Rollins and Dr. Morelidge about what are the strategies that we are deploying in Springdale? What are those big audacious goals and that staircase to educational excellence to a person? Those are recited back to me. That's pretty impressive. Where we've been asked for help is developing a Marshallese Engagement Plan with your strong population of Marshallese. It's really understanding, learning, and how to engage with the Marshallese community to make education a priority. Second is social workers in middle schools. And we've been able to identify resources that the Endeavor Foundation through HARC have made available just to the school district, five social workers, two of which are Marshallese community leaders, and five dedicated to your school system. Invest in reading. The Dolly Parton Imagination Library is one that we're working on funding opportunities for. And then benchmarking best practices with other Forward Communities. You've already had one visit from the Independence County School District to your Don Tyson School of Innovation, and we have future visits scheduled for the purpose of studying pre-K curriculum and then community partnerships in the upcoming months. So you do have a four-person team and that is now on the ground in northwest Arkansas. And I would like to just talk a little bit about that team. First is Leann Mills. She is a Communication and Marketing Leader in northwest Arkansas. And she is now serving as an adjunct professor in the Walton School of Business and Fulbright Colleges where she teaches future workforce leaders, how to be more effective leaders and communicators. She spent 28 years at Walmart and that's where I had the opportunity to learn and work with her. And she is really critical in helping us learn how to tell the story about Forward and then also tell your story back to Forward and other communities across the state. The next one is Dr. Terry Nichols. Dr. Nichols served in public education for more than 35 years in roles of teacher, principal, and superintendent. And he currently serves as the Assistant Professor at Arkansas Tech University in the Educational Leadership Program for aspiring principals and superintendents. He's also the Program Director for the Arkansas Center of Executive Leadership. His wife is Catherine Nichols and they come as a great team. She's served in public education for more than 30 years as a teacher, an assistant superintendent in educational services, and 10 years as a principal. She currently serves as an Assistant Professor at Arkansas Tech University, teaching educational leaders who are seeking their educational specialist credential and their doctorate in education. Terry and Catherine both have a very deep understanding of best practices and the ability to apply them effectively in schools with one goal, and that is for, to unleash the creative potential of every student. My background is that I have been a senior executive within Walmart for the past 26 years. My entire, hate to say it, 40-year career has all been in retailing, but the pinnacle being my experience at Walmart. And my focus has been in culture, change, management, and talent development. And talent development is probably the most relative piece that I bring because it was my job to train and prepare new associates, 1.4 million of them across the U.S., to be effective in the workplace. So where there were successes and great skills that were brought to us by the students, parents, and their education, we could build on those. Where there were gaps, we had to fill those gaps. And so I bring that perspective of, on the work, in the workplace, the skills and characteristics that are important. I also have been serving in the community on several different boards. Just a few are Jones, the Jones Trust Board, the Endeavor Foundation, Northwest Arkansas Community College, and Arkansas Children's Hospital. And the common theme in all of those is kids. And so it's my privilege to now be working with the Forward Arkansas team. I think we're a great blend of educators and business leaders, and I think that's going to bring a great diversity in how we engage with your school district. But Leann Mills and myself are your two individuals that Dr. Morelidge was speaking about, but we have access to all four and then many more resources. Because Forward is a nonprofit organization funded by the Walton Family Foundation, the Winthrop Rockefeller Foundation, and sponsored by the Arkansas State Department of Education. So we serve as your liaison to have a connection and to bring innovation and creative thinking about how to really raise the achievements and education levels in Arkansas for preparedness into college and the workplace, and also to be your arms and legs to assist in any important initiatives that you find barriers or needs. That is our role. And it's really my privilege to work with Dr. Rollins and Dr. Morelidge, and I'm learning many more of the great leaders, great teachers, great principals that you have in this school district. Are there any questions?
More questions?
Your focus areas?
The ones that I skipped through?
Yes.
Yeah.
So Marshallese and then the other?
Oh, yes.
Focus areas?
Yes.
How much, was that an effort that took a long time to get to those, to those areas? Or can you explain the process a little bit?
Actually, I've let Dr. Morelidge and Dr. Rollins do that because I've only been involved for a month. Six weeks, actually. But when we had our first meeting, and I think you've been designated as Forward Community for a couple of years now, those were my takeaways from the conversation with Dr. Rollins and Dr. Morelidge. And we said, yes, we want to meet you where you are. Those are really important programs and initiatives that feed right into the larger strategy of what Forward Arkansas is trying to accomplish. So that's where those came from.
Okay.
Great question. Thank you. Other questions? I'll leave copies of the deck and my business card for you if you'd like to connect with me.
Well, I want to thank you very much, you personally and certainly your team. We welcome your partnership.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins.
We just serve kids here and I know you know that.
Yep.
It's just become more and more obvious, we talk about students and student success all the time, but it's become more obvious that we also need to be talking about families and family success. And you saw, created evidence with that last evening, I believe.
Yes.
Dr. Brackett, you counted. Did he leave me?
Yeah.
I think we had 53 or 54.
63, not so many.
63. 63 or 64 family members in our general patronship. And Jeff, I know you were busy when I was sharing, just to delight. There's a great picture over here. Last Friday morning, we had 77 Marshallese families in our conference room upstairs. And that happened, really our principals made that happen. They had built relationships with these families. I think every principal brought at least two Marshallese family members to that meeting. Like I said, we had 77 in attendance. So this building of partnerships is central to whatever success we will achieve. And we understand that better today, I think, perhaps than we ever have. So I thank you for being a part of that conversation. We really look forward to it.
It's been my pleasure. I thoroughly enjoyed coming to the patronship meeting yesterday. And when I did my debrief with the team, I was like, did you know? Did you know? Did you know? I mean, this is what this school district is doing. And I must tell you, it's with great pride that we get the opportunity to serve with you. So thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Rollins, members of the board. I've got some exciting items. The first thing I'd like to share with you is the Bilinguality Award, and I would like to paint a little bit of a picture about this. This year, January 31st of this year, ADE put out a memo that defined the Arkansas Bilinguality Award as recognizing students who studied and attained proficiency in two or more languages. I'm going to restate that because it's not that they can read and write in two languages, they have to show proficiency in at least two languages. Shortly after that, two months actually, they said, okay, all applications are due. So we have two phenomenal leaders in our district. Ms. Rainey from Harbor High School and Ms. Novotny from Springdale High School, and they are leaders in the field of foreign language. And so I meet with them regularly, but they also help guide and direct what we do as a district. And so the first thing they did was immediately got on it and worked as a team and produced some phenomenal results. As they bring the students forward, if they could come forward now, please. I'm going to have them share some information, but I'd like you to keep an ear out for the number of students they're going to be talking about because it's pretty amazing in one.
Hi there. Thanks for having us today. We do have, just, these are examples of things that we, the documents that we use in our ceremony. We had, out of 95, the first round of this award, in the state, there were 95 that were awarded across the state. Eighty-seven of those 95 were from Springdale. Eighty-seven. Forty-two of them were from SHS and 45 were from Harbor. Harbor had two German students as well, the rest were Spanish. And we have two great examples here that we're going to let them sort of introduce themselves. But Luis is a current senior. He's one of the only two juniors who were awarded last year, and he's at SHS. And Dahlia is a graduate from Harbor, and she was one of the four that were recognized by the commissioner at the State Board of Education Board Meeting that they had in May. We're just, we're really excited that Springdale led the way like we always do. This month, October 1st, there was another round of applications, and so we're waiting for those results. But yeah, we just, we really wanted to show off our kids because they do the work and they were the ones that met the requirements. So is there something?
No, we'll, we will know next week for the fall round. So this year's seniors and some other juniors have applied and we'll know that next week.
The ultimate goal is to have a seal of bilinguality. That would be national recognition, something that we could choose as a district to put as, on, an actual seal on their diploma or medal of some kind of, this is a certificate that's formal, but also something that will help them in higher education. For job applications, a lot of students across the country that are following this path are able to negotiate for higher pay because it demonstrates their proficiency in both speaking and writing, listening and reading all of the languages. But this is Luis and this is Dahlia. If you have any questions for them.
Dahlia, you've already graduated, right?
Yes.
What are you doing now?
Right now, I'm doing an INWAC and I have classes there four days a week. And I'm also working part-time at Sims Club and I'm also working part-time, or one day a week at the police station.
Okay. What do you do there?
There, I help translate for the people that have RDA ankle monitors and are getting house stress.
Someone's got to do it.
That's great.
What are your plans after you graduate then?
Well, I plan on, after INWAC, I plan on moving either to Arkansas Tech or U of A where I want to graduate with being a primary education teacher.
Great.
And you want to come back to Springdale?
Yeah.
And what are you doing?
Luis, I'm actually seeking to go to OSU and do a sports podcast. And recently, we actually went to a convention and we talked about how being bilingual has helped us throughout the community, which I think here in Springdale has been really awesome to see how, the fact that we're bilingual has helped us just meet people. And she was talking about how she thinks that the fact that being bilingual should like go on, on our diploma or help us maybe get more money and stuff like that. But I think more than that, it's already helped us gain just friendships and people throughout the community since it's so diverse and just meet people, you know, like us who are successful and just get to meet them and gain their help and just really succeed in that.
We hear a lot about bilingual. Maybe this is maybe the first time I can remember hearing bilingual. And that's a whole different, all the way. So congratulations.
Especially with the culture of literacy right now in Springdale, the literacy element of reading and writing professionally, not, I mean, the speaking and the communicating, face-to-face is one thing, but getting it on paper and making it a professional communication skill is really huge right now, and it's perfect timing with our focus.
How long does it take the average student then to be able to do this?
It really depends on how serious they are with their studies, what kind of background they have. We have our students that have grown up learning both Spanish and English now in Springdale who were born in Springdale, but they're growing up bilingual. And so they're still developing their professional skills to produce writing in that way. There are students that start taking Spanish or French or German in ninth grade or 10th grade. And so it really just depends on how serious and how dedicated they are to their studies. There's a, there's a website where the DoD, Department of Defense, has a graph that says, if you start at this grade, then it'll take you this long, start at this grade. For this award, they have to reach proficiency at intermediate, mid, which is kind of like five years, six years, I think is what they said, of study, of just traditional study.
That's great.
We have, we have a really big group of kids that earned the award. We're really excited. On their websites, arbilinguality.org, and you can see their pictures and it's all Springdale.
So you said we had 87 out of 95?
Yes, sir.
It's A.
We had a ceremony, mostly organized by Cyndi Novotny, but we had a ceremony at the Jones Center to award all of our kids. And so that's the picture that's on the website page because the, most of them were harsh Springdale kids.
It's exciting.
Are your parents here with you tonight?
We're, we're.
Congratulations.
They're great.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you so much.
Great job.
Great work.
And I will say the amount of work that went into what was required, these ladies did an enormous amount of work and it couldn't have happened. I know, I know we're giving students credit, but they did an amazing amount of work. So thank you, ladies. The next item is introducing our 2017 National Merit semifinalist. And so just to kind of remind you, I know I do this every year, but these students have been on a trek to get to where they are. So in ninth and 10th grade, they start taking the PSAT and they practice. As an 11th grader, they took the PSAT, which actually counts. That is the year that it's the most important. And then they patiently wait almost an entire year to find out if the score that they earned on it actually grants them to be a semifinalist. This year, we had five students that made semifinalist standing, and they just found out about a month ago. At this time, I'd like to call them forward. Dr. Rollins, if you could help me, please pass up these certificates. Two of the individuals were not able to make it tonight and we'll try to introduce them at another board meeting. But Carolina Lomond, she's not able to be here tonight and neither is Maria Pratt. But I would like to recognize the other three students, so if you will please come forward as I call your name. Pablo Manon, he is a student from Harbor High School. He attended Hunt, Helston, Central, and Harbor. Michael Pitts. Michael Pitts. And he has attended Springdale High School. And Christina Trexler. She attended Walker, Helen Tyson, Southwest and Harvard. So just kind of as a little bit, I know they've spent a lot of time getting here, but let me just tell, tell you what's in store for them now. So now that they've made semifinals, the next step are they have just a few months to pull everything together for, to apply for finalists. And so the first thing they'll do is they'll complete an application. They have to have a consistently high GPA. They'll write an essay. They'll also take the SAT just to show their proficiency from the PSAT and to confirm that. And then they'll have to be endorsed by a school official, such as their principal. And so at that point in February, we'll know the results for finalists. But we are so, so proud of these individuals. Can you help me? I'm going to let him speak if you don't mind, Dr. Rollins. So if you have any questions for them, they're amazing students and, and looking through all of their accomplishments, it's just absolutely amazing as you can, as you can imagine. But I'll give them opportunity to answer the questions.
Who does that?
College.
I guess obviously, what college that you're, you can all three answer, I guess.
I'm undecided right now. I'm considering a bunch of different places. I just have to like get all my offers. National merit's been a huge part of that because they, different schools have different programs for National Merit scholars. So I'm just kind of looking at everything right now, seeing where I want to go.
What would you study?
I'm thinking about business right now.
Mississippi State is one of the ones that I'm looking at and also Paul Smith's College for forestry or forest management.
I'm still undecided as well. I'm still exploring all my options. I'm applying to a large number of universities. And it's all going to depend on whether or not I get accepted and the scholarships and funds that are available. But being National Merit certainly has opened up a lot of doors. It's, it's incredible, all the opportunities that are being offered from different colleges. And it's very exciting.
What field of study are you considering?
I'm looking mostly into political science or economics, maybe business as well.
That's great. Do you have parents here tonight? Any other parents? Congratulations.
So all the mail starts coming in now, is that correct? Yes, so they're going to be inundated. Once they hit semifinalist standing, it is amazing the opportunities that will be open for them. So we're very, very proud of them. The third item is the Springdale Spirit Award. And Mr. Jinks, could you come forward, please? It's not for him, so just, I'm just...
It could be though. It could be.
He may be a candidate though.
So just to kind of give a little set, this was issued by Mayor Sprouse. It states that Springdale is filled with amazing people who work hard to make Springdale exceptional. It is for this reason that the Springdale Spirit Award was created. The Springdale Spirit Award is for members of the community who are positive forces for good in Springdale. Individuals are nominated who work to make Springdale a better place, whether through charity, business, voluntary civic engagement, community outreach, or any other means that help the residents of Springdale. And Mr. Jinks has some exciting news to share about one of his students.
Well, Dr. Smith did an excellent job of explaining what this award means. And Springdale High School has been blessed to have two of these recipients. One of them was Mark Solis last year. I want to ask Michael Justice to come up here at this time. While he's coming up here, I just want to tell you that when she says it makes Springdale a better place to be, you take that as a student and you ask, how's that apply to your school? These individuals make Springdale High School a better place to be. And they do that by various means. One of them is how they're performing in the classroom. The other one is their leadership in the hallways, in the classroom and extracurriculars. So Michael has done a phenomenal job with AP Language Composition and AP Lit and Composition. He's taken AP Statistics. He took AP Calculus AB last year and he's taken AP Calculus BC this year. Was Mandarin Chinese, again, Dr. Rollins, there it is again. These, the kids love the Mandarin Chinese. But he also participates with our golf team and also with our baseball team. And Michael is a truly blessing and delight to have in our school and I'm very proud of him. We're all very proud of him. And Michael, we'll just say a few words, but congratulations.
It's a big honor to receive this award as someone who is very passionate about the community and Springdale High School. I'd like to thank you for having me and for the school board, district and Springdale High School for always supporting me in anything I wanted to pursue.
So how did they let you know that you got this award?
I was sent an email, I think, when I was nominated, that I received the award. And then I went to meet Mayor Sprouse, who gave it to me.
What are you doing for high school?
I'm planning on attending the University of Arkansas to study business analytics and statistics.
That sounds fun.
And you're part of the, you're still part of the Gear Hogs?
No, not currently. I had just so much other stuff. Now I'm doing baseball and golf too, so. Don't know.
And you play the piano though?
Yes.
I believe his parents are hearing his grandmother, I believe, her earphones.
Thanks for coming in.
I have that effect on a room.
Clear down the room, Joe.
I can clear a room like nobody's business, I believe. Normally, it's an honor for me to get to talk about accomplishments of our students. Tonight, we get to talk about some of our, some of our teachers, some of our colleagues. First one up is near and dear to me. I had the chance to work with Mr. House as we started the School of Innovation and watch him really start to work with our STEM groups on campus, especially our robotics group. Kind of led to the award that we get to talk about tonight. And it is now an honor for me to get to introduce to you Mr. Jason House, the Mike Needham STEM champion.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. It's a humbling experience to be, to be honored or recognized for the work that you do. I know many of you have had that experience. As I've just reflected on this process, I mean, I've just thought about, like I never really felt like I was doing anything special. Like I was just taking advantage of the opportunities that were laid out in front of me. And the tremendous opportunities working at the School of Innovation, at George Lakeside, Sonora, so many Springdale schools and just how every day we were presented with opportunities to do great things for our kids, to think of innovative ways, to present our curriculum. And to challenge our kids to just meet, meet that challenge and to rise to new levels. And so the work I got to do building curriculum at SOI was just a natural extension of, of those opportunities we have every day. And really, I was, more than anything, I was impressed and humbled when I had a chance to meet Tara Hodge while I was there. It was my first time running into Tara and she was there to receive that Rising Star Award. And I realized there's still so much more I could do. And I have no doubt that in a very short time, she's going to be standing up here being introduced as a STEM champion for Springdale. So I just want to thank you all for believing in me, Joe, for the opportunities. And now, I guess I'm just a guy, just happened to win an award. Yeah, it was Twin Day at Sonora Middle School today. And I want to say, me and Mr. Buchanan made a heck of a team today. I'm just going to put that out there.
So can you share a little bit of the, of a project that you're working on this year?
Wow. So this year, part of our emphasis at Sonora Middle School is we are, obviously, we are growing the culture of literacy. We're working hard to grow our co-teach model to service our special education students within the general education curriculum instead of pulling them out to those self-contained or those resource settings. And then really trying to grow that project-based learning model into our science and math programs also. So our ELA and social studies have been working with that for a couple of years with the guidance of Mr. Legrone from the PDC. And part of my work with Dr. Dotson and the team there is to really try to bring some of my PBL experiences from SOI into Sonora Middle School and build that STEM program there also. Looking forward to that. Well, thanks.
STEM is the end thing, isn't it?
It is. Well, it needs to be. And I'm going to misquote the statistics. Tara probably correct me, but I mean, as we look at the next 10 years, I mean, you're talking 70, 80% of all new jobs are, are developing in the STEM field. And so if we're going to service our kids, we have to teach them how to think like engineers and scientists, how to problem solve, how to work well together to, to meet those goals. So it's an exciting time to be in education, for sure. She did, was I pretty close?
I was watching.
All right, thanks Tara.
I was watching, she was.
I'm going to her class, I'm going to learn a lot of it.
I just, I want to give you an opportunity as well. You do so many things for our district. You help coordinate the East initiatives, provide enormous leadership there. I think we're back to 16 East programs, I believe. Speak to that East initiative because it ties directly to STEM as well.
It sure does. And again, when we come back to kind of the launching conversations today about providing students opportunities for choice and voice and the work that they're doing, connecting to the project-based learning and then STEM. So East, as you guys know, is, is all about providing students a voice and identifying a need within their community, creating partnerships with organizations and individuals that can help to meet that need. And then giving students access to the technology and the skills that'll help solve that problem. And well, I've been guilty of taking a lot of time in front of this board showing off some of those projects and I look forward to do that again a little bit later on. But we are excited, we're coming into East Night Out season. In fact, Sonora Elementary is having theirs tonight. So if you guys get done before seven, I encourage you to rush over there and see what Mr. Worthy's got going on. So East Night Out season is happening now. Conference will be in March down in Hot Springs. And Springdale is a leader in the, in the East community throughout the nation. We are held up as an exemplar, for sure, of excellence in STEM, excellence in the East. It's just, like I said, it's just exciting to be a part of. And I feel like every day I just show up and do the job that needs to be done. And every once in a while, I guess I did the right thing and somebody noticed, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I get to introduce a peak performer, April Reed, outstanding career and technical educator from Springdale High School, JAG teacher there, and now the recipient of the Peak Performance Award at the annual conference.
So this award has my name on it, but it really is our kids. And so I just want to kind of share some statistics. The peak performance that we received an award for specifically is employment rate. And if you know about employment rate, that's, that's a hard thing for high school students to attain. Compared nationally, 63% of JAG students were employed, maybe part-time or full-time with a combination of work, maybe military service. JAG Springdale High School class, 94%. So our students, they may not be employed full-time, but they are definitely employed full-time or part-time or military service. Total positive outcomes, this means that they're either working full-time, they're going to school and working. They've gone into the military or they're just going to school. That, that's considered positive outcomes. 97% of our student graduates from the class of 2016 had positive outcomes. So I always say, what about that one? Because our motto in JAG is whatever it takes. We're going to do whatever it takes to help every kid be successful. This young man actually has a terminal illness, so he wasn't able to work. So he was doing the best thing he could to, to make a positive outcome and taking care of himself. Full-time jobs, the national, what we're shooting for nationally is 60%. We attained 66% were, out of, out of our JAG class of 2016, 66% were full-time, employed full-time. And I, I'm kind of thinking, well, we're only 6% above that average. Like I always like to, I like our kids to, to be excellent, as we've heard all evening, excellence. But I think further down, when we look at further education rate, 57% of our, our JAG graduates went on to further education. That could be a two-year school, a four-year school, a technical school or on-the-job training. And with the demographic of kiddos that we work with, they're students who, some people would say at-risk. We like to say they have lots of opportunities. They may have some barriers to success. And so we like to not only see them become career-ready, but also college-ready so they have no barriers to what it is they like to do in their future. The class of 2016, here's some of the places they were working. Ball Corp., Shift Lead, North West Medical Center, Springdale Dispatch, Springdale Police Station Dispatch, Walmart CSMs, we had three of those. Black Hills Energy, US Navy, US Marines, Simply Fabrication, a welder. Pre-K Instructional Assistant, Houndstooth, Conier, Head Start. Fashion cleaners, Westwood Health and Rehab, Sweets or Properties, Cargill, a receptionist. Rockline, Bear Bank, First Security Bank. And many, many of our students are at the U of A, INWAC or NTI. And to kind of close out, I want to kind of tell a story about a 2016 graduate. Name is Rachel. Rachel began her senior year, she'd been to several alternative schools. And they hadn't, they hadn't worked for her, so she came back to us at Springdale High School. She was barely an 11th grader, she was behind on credits. And the JAG program is really nice in that we can give them time in their school day to make up credits so that they can graduate on time with their class. So when, when Rachel came in, we sat down, we had a talk, we developed a plan so that she could graduate. She teared up. And I might tear up telling this because I love my kiddos. She said, nobody, nobody's ever thought I could do that. Nobody's ever thought I could graduate. My family, teachers, they just kind of passed me along like you're somebody else's problem now. And so when she had that support and that relationship and a plan to see that she could succeed, she did and she soared. She made up the, all the extra credit that she needed in night school or credit recovery during the school day. She attained her CNA license, decided, I don't want to do that. And so she's, she's moved on. She currently works at Black Hills Energy and is going to begin in the spring, prerequisites to become a dental hygienist. And it all comes from that support. And it's not just support from me. We have an awesome team at Springdale High School that come alongside and behind and push and shove and support our kiddos in great and amazing ways. And it, it starts kind of from the top down and you guys are, are board. And I thank you for your support for our kiddos. Thank you, Dr. Rollins, for your support.
Thank you.
Mr. Jinks, Oliver, Sister Principals, they do a great job so that we in turn conserve kiddos. Thank you. Any questions?
Congratulations.
Great story.
Hey, clarification question. When you said full-time, were you talking about students that have already graduated?
Yes, so, so...
Full-time employment.
So...
Not working full-time and...
Unique thing about JAG is I serve kids during the school day, but I also have the awesome opportunity and, and accountability to follow those kids, the kids. I always say in a non-creeper way after graduation for a year. And so not only do I get to see us preparing them to be college and career-ready, but I get to see them actually attain that readiness.
Thank you.
Is JAG only at Springdale High School or is it both high schools? Just Springdale?
They're both. We're going to kind of turn the page just a little bit. As part of being a district conversion charter, it's required that we actually offer a separate report to the public every year. So our data is included in the district performance data that you'll see from Ms. Morgan. But we're also required to talk about our own work over the last year. It seems like every group that comes through the School of Innovation gets a report to the public because the packet that I've shared with you tonight is the packet that our visitors to the building get. So we really try and make sure that we're presenting an open book at who we are and what we've done for this last year. This past year represents the first year that the School of Innovation stood under its own heli number. its own LEA number. For the two years before that, we also contributed back into our feeder schools. So that represents the change for this year is, as we opened that LEA number, the charter that we put into the state indicated our own performance goals and what we'd be trying to work towards. So that's what this report reflects back to. We know the mission. We are really trying to inspire kids through innovative education. That has not changed from day one. And now we're kind of having some time to go back and hone in on what does that look like for us? So what do the instructional methods look like? What do the different components of that look like? How are we communicating with families as they come in? We talk about these things. The challenge, the concurrent coursework, the AP offerings, the career pathways, the blended coursework, and what does that look like for us? The executive skills, and this is a fun moment for me. Today, we had our first celebration of what we call the Phoenix Award on campus. That is a public acknowledgement of when kids go above and beyond in any of those habits of mind that we had, those employable skills. They're actually nominated by their peers, so it's not a teacher's pet moment. It is my friends, my coworkers have now seen me exhibiting these skills, and they've nominated me for them. So we had a reception for them today. The hands-on piece, the project-based piece, the technology integration, the flexible pacing, all things that are included in our vision, but as we go forward, things that we'll continue to talk about. Whenever people ask us, "What is our focus?", it really falls under these four categories. We're not only talking about accelerating, but we're trying to dig deeper. We're trying to be advanced. And then we're working toward college and industry. So this is not new dialogue for any of us. What does that look like every day is, how does that play out through the certificates, through the pathways that you have in the folder, through the opportunities that we have for the kids? So those curriculum opportunities you heard from Mr. House, we started with seven career pathways, East being one of those. We followed up with engineering, robotics, construction trades, computer science, agriculture, alternative energy. This year, we've added in the NTI component of the diesel technology and the medical professions, and then that expanded pathway shows where we intend to be as we continue to grow. The concurrent piece, and you can talk to us about how has that grown over the course of the four years that we've been open? As we look at juniors and seniors, we now have some who are well on their way to that associate's degree. We have some at varying levels in college classes. That's part of that student voice and choice piece. They have to choose what works for them. If you start to look at our younger grades who are coming in now, I can tell you that all the kids who are coming in in these lower grades are on that collegiate pathway, and then they're starting to sample in and out of those career and technical certificates also. So we're proud of the progress that we're making in that area. A program that we added this year, and it's our own in-house look at career preparation, is that College and Career Readiness Program. It's a series of seminar classes that we've added, but they actually get six credits over the course of those classes, but they've fused in career preparation, executive skill development, those habits of mind skills, career aptitude assessment, so that as they leave, they have that plan that we've talked about so many times, that as they're leaving high school, I now have a plan of, this is where I'm going, this is what I want to do, these are the experiences that I'm going to take with me. So in the folder, you have a copy of all the pathways, and we've talked those through. But that accelerated high school pathway is still that base model. Then we can add in layers of college offerings, career credentialing, and then we can talk about that full associate's package for families who want it. Where the rubber meets the road on that is those personal interviews that now our counselors, our assistant principals, they're having with every family that comes in. It's that college advising moment. They sit down with mom and dad and student. They're ironing out, what does the best outcome look like for me? That kind of leads this way. As we have those conversations, that opens the door to, you know, college is still kind of difficult for me, even based on the tuition rate that you're offering. That brought community partners to the forefront. We talk about partnerships in here. This would not be possible without it. We acknowledged them a couple of months ago. The Arconic Foundation came through and wanted to help us in that conversation, so they helped us create that scholarship program to pay for concurrent credits for those career and technical offerings for students who need financial assistance. Well, this past week, we got another acknowledgement from the larger Arconic National Group. They have a major interest in STEM science, robotics. Got notification from them last week that there's an additional $10,000 coming toward the campus for STEM robotics development, for engineering coursework. And then again, that opportunity through NTI, that CNA program, that diesel technology program, new partnership with Northwest Health. They're going to start working with us in terms of medical equipment. They've offered to donate about two or three hospital beds to the program, and then equipment to start working with these nursing students in what does their variety of medical training look like. So they want to come forward and be a partner with us. If you rewind last year, this kind of came off of the heels of the Real World Wednesday program. We hosted 137 different career partners in the building last year. In addition to that, we offered that career fair late spring. 60 career and technical college booths were on campus. Speaks to the depth of partnerships that were starting to grow there. Academics, again, this year to date, 247 new conferences coming in, those personalized conferences with students, 255 virtual courses being taken right now, so the development, the growth of that virtual program's coming. And now we started down the arts and intramurals, introductory athletic conversations about an intramurals program on campus, the fine arts piece, giving kids the opportunity to go compete through clubs, activities, fine arts. That's growing right now. I walked through a beginning guitar class yesterday. If you've ever walked through a beginning band class, you all know what the sound that you would expect would be. Well, there were 18, and they're playing different parts on the guitar, and I didn't have to hold my ears a single time, so it was a great moment. As we start to look at, and again, this is based on the end of, as we closed the books last year, concurrent classes being taken, 55 different classes being offered. And then AP, you can see the enrollment in the AP coursework. The next block is important to me, the number of students earning high school credit in the eighth grade. And then in addition to those classes, credits being earned for high school electives. These are eighth-grade students that we're talking about who are developing high school credit that early. Right now, we're at 777, and we are really starting to represent who we are as a district across the board. When we opened the charter, we had to write in our academic expectations, and we wanted to exceed state and national standards on the assessments. If you look at that first set of bars, that's where we are today. Outstanding year, and that credit goes back to the students, to the teachers who are in front of them every day. They set out to make the vision, the mission come true, and they're doing it every day. So we're starting year four, and we want to build on that data right there. Because at the end of the day, we've all seen this a million times, that's where we are. I'll sure take any questions that you have.
On enrollment, seven to 11, 777 kids. If I'm, am I thinking this right, your first graduating class, or should I think about graduating class in 2019?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. First graduating class next year.
Cool.
Will you kindly, go ahead Jeff, ask your question. With the associate's degree opportunity, we had a cost estimate when this whole thing started. Is that about still where we expected it to be? Yes, sir. If we have a student who wanted to pursue the full associate's right now, that'd be just a little less than $3,000. Wow.
For $60.
Yes, sir. For full $60. Make it into college as a junior. That's right.
Top press.
Yes, sir. That's, that's a deal.
Top press.
Yes, sir.
Help the board understand, Kevin, I think I'll always remember this question. We were at a school board meeting over at Salome, I know you remember it, and we were just bringing this idea forward, and Kevin said, "Ask me. You know, what if the other districts in the state don't follow this lead?"" And we didn't know how that would go, but try to explain to the board the scope of interests from around the state, around the region, the number of teams that have been through the school, visiting, looking. I think, I know the board will be very interested in that.
Sure. And Dr. Schlocombe, she'd be standing in the back of the room giving me numbers and figures, but it seems to me that right now, we're hosting tour groups monthly coming through now. In addition to that, we have groups who will come through the school directly, or we have business and community groups who are, they seem to be touring weekly. I mean, we have a group in the building all the time. On top of that, we actually have schools who are accessing our curriculum that our TOSAs and our teachers have developed, and on top of that, we have students across the state who are accessing the virtual curriculum through the virtual program also. We're changing the way that schools are doing business, one district at a time, or maybe two or three at a time. But now we're also starting to get higher ed institutions coming through, and that might even be a greater measure of success. As we start talking about that transition from high school into college, now we're starting to get colleges and universities coming through wanting to know what to expect from our kids. Because there's the next big gap that we have to bridge together. If students are used to learning in this model, how do we make sure that next step into college continues to build on where they are?
Board, y'all remember that part of our goal here was, as this program matured, as it developed, as our TOSAs, our teachers on special assignment wrote the personalized curriculum for this model, we wanted to share it. We wanted to be able to transfer anywhere in the region, anywhere in the state or beyond. And Dr. Schlocombe is constantly keeping us updated in terms of the interest around the region in terms of this personalized teaching model. Kevin, does that kind of help? Do you remember that conversation?
I do.
We were talking about? Yeah. I do think there's enormous interest that's coming forward, and I see many districts, and I see our own schools across the district following this model, so.
I do too.
Appreciate what you're doing very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
On our little trip, did I hear some discussion about someone trying, in flying, that they were the first school of innovation in Arkansas? And we were thinking maybe they weren't?
Well, there was a, there's a wonderful project going over West Memphis and working with Mid-South Community College over there. And so they're walking right along as partners with us here, so I'm very proud of that district as well, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
He's a master.
Melody, you ready? On a broader scale, we want an annual report now regarding the district performance.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Rollins. Am I as loud, Randy, as I think I am? Is that okay?
Sure.
So guys, I just want to, I want to follow a program that's really been a year-long program, if you think about it. The rules and regs in Arkansas require that we give, as a district, a public meeting. That's to ensure that our patrons and our parents and our public members are aware of our reflective progress and performance, and also what our goals and initiatives and opportunities are going forward to address that. As you see, we do, we go way above and beyond that. As I sat back there, I was thinking, I want to make sure and go on record for our patrons and our parents and our public who might be viewing this outside of this face-to-face meeting, and let them know that if there is any part of this general overview that I provide that they want to look at deeper, all of our board meetings are recorded and archived, and they can go deep into any particular content they're interested in. I went back and looked as far back as September. In September, we had a focused, I want to give credit to Dr. Schlocombe and Dr. Rollins and our district team for creating that program, Dr. Rollins, over the course of a year, because we really do an annual report all year long for our patrons. We have celebrations of student success, but we also are trying to grow the knowledge and understanding of what we're doing in our district every single month. So I'm just doing this to meet the letter of the law, but I'm kind of the conclusion of what's already happened for a year. Back in September, we had a focus on literacy for all, where we went into an in-depth understanding of our programs. In November, we focused on social well-being, which included child nutrition, coordinated school health, and our counseling programs. In December, we went deep into the Rs. In January, we had a focus on CTE programs across our district. March, Dr. Bridgeforth did a dive with you on our English learner programs. April, our enrichment programs were discussed in-depth for you around advanced placement, international faculty laureate, gifted and talented. May, we talked about athletics and activities, and in June, we gave an overview of our facility and support services program. So you can see, I want our public to know, if they're watching, that we have a record of that, we have an archival of that. They can go in further, much deeper than what I'm going to cover tonight. So I just kind of wanted to go on record and say that. All of that is available on our district website underneath our school board link, and they can find that information. So just to refocus this, the instructional vision of our district, and I'm doing the district-level report, is all students will be literate, numerate, problem solvers, and good decision-makers. Our educational focus, first priority is our students. You've heard tonight from several different people, including following Mr. Rollins just now, that students, we focus on personalization of learning for all. We have high expectations for all students. And teaching and learning, our focus in teaching and learning with our district instructional management plan this year is, again, focusing on instructional rigor. Inspect what is inspected through classroom observations. Don't just build it and expect that that curriculum's being used. Go out there and look for evidence that it is being used in the classrooms. Improve student and teacher attendance. That's an item that's, I think, probably going to have one of the greatest impacts that we've seen. I've got a slide in just a second on that. Can I bounce back, Missy, if I go forward?
You can go back.
Let me tell you a minute about chronic absenteeism. Part, I'm going to talk about some glows, Dr. Rollins, if that's okay. Just kind of sidebar on that. With our Race to the Top Grant, we have to identify pieces of indicators that indicate success that the grant could possibly be helping move forward. One of that is the reduction of chronic absenteeism. And a chronically absentee student is one that's defined as having missed nine or more days in a semester, or 18 or more in a year. Let me give you some data that we just submitted to the United States Department of Ed to show some progress there. Chronic absenteeism was dramatically reduced in grades three, five, and nine. Those are the benchmark years that we chose to identify before we started our grant. So it's not that those are more important than any other grades, but we were benchmarking three, five, and nine. And from 2016 to 17, based upon the data, we have greater than a 50% improvement in chronic absenteeism being reduced across our district in those grades. So that is a celebration. When you make something a priority, when you identify it and you start tracking it, you can see that, you can see the improvement. And I just wanted to make you aware of that, that that was one of our focuses in teaching and learning, and we've made other progress, but I wanted to make you aware that the student progress is definitely measurable, and we're seeing that. You've heard tonight from various members about developing a culture of literacy around our new reading model and initiative. I'm proud to say that we have protected time in our school day for reading. We have literacy, as we've had in past years, embedded in our core subjects, math, science, and social studies. And we've really developed a program of professional development that's research-based for growing the capacity among our teachers to support that in our district. Any questions about that? District curriculum. Of course, it's aligned to our state standards and assessments. We seek stakeholder feedback for continuous improvement. Curriculum is a living product, so it's never done, it's never complete. Our district curriculum is in its third year of development, including revisions and responses to changes made in state standards and assessments. We onboard and seek a third-party evaluations to conduct studies on our curriculum units, and we also use student formative data in analyzing the outcomes of our curriculum being used in our PLCs in each building. Notice, I talk again, as I did last year, about the writing rubics developed to guide rigor. I'm going to show you a slide here. Notice, this is a slide of performance from two years of ACT Aspire writing scores around a band of performance grade three, five. Writing continues to be a strong subject for Springdale during online summative testing, especially in the early grades, and it starts, we start testing in grade three. Writing rubics to guide rigor, as well as one-to-one technology application, have shown great outcomes during our first two administrations of ACT Aspire when it comes to writing. I wanted you to see that. I think I can point to this. In the very first year, looking at collectively, at writing performance across grades three, four, and five, Springdale led all these big districts, including the other four in North. including the other four in Northwest Arkansas in writing performance. And that is a huge celebration. That is huge. This year, we're still a strong leader in writing. I just wanted you to be able to walk away with some facts that I'm just kind of showing you as outcomes. Any questions about that?
Did that surprise you?
Yes. I won't lie. The first year, I wanted a surprise, I'll be honest, the first year you take a test. But it really, I know Dr. Rollins heard me say, I really, I don't want to give all credit to what our grant did to help us with one-to-one technology literacy, but I don't want to steal anything from what we did, you know, as far as professional development around our writing rubrics. But that's huge, y'all. That shows that our little ones are very comfortable with writing and using the device online. And having worried about that as a state person, about would I be capturing a child's ability to write or use technology? That was, that was huge. So that shows quite possibly a great return of our investment in our kiddos. And our little ones, I have to tell you, our K-2, they're just, they're right there. They're using iPad minis and they're taking interactive moments to demonstrate their learning. And it's a, it's a natural progression when they get to third grade. And our teachers do a great job of embedding technology in their project-based learning pieces in the classroom. It's a combination.
The kids getting exposed to devices.
Yes, and good, good training around writing, yes.
You don't write with a device, though.
Well, they, yes, they perform, they do their response on a device. They sure do. They key, they key it on a, yes, on a keyboard. Okay. Teaching and learning, I'm not going to go deep into this. I just want to put it collectively here, but some structures that we have in place, and I'm sure I will miss some, that help us deepen student learning at all grades are our student advisory programs, which you've heard about, personalized learning plans, student-led conferencing. Wonderful outcomes of our standards-based report cards. I'm hearing other districts say, we want to, we want to do the same thing. We want to repeat this. And that's huge. That gives parents details of information about their children that they've never had before. You heard Joe speak about multiple pathways to graduation. And of course, our pre-K, that early intervention investment in our children in helping identify the skill needs that help close those achievement gaps early. We just talked about the one-to-one digital learning opportunity. Partnerships. This is just a touch base of several of the partnerships we have. We value our school and community partnerships. Our partners in education, our Northwest Arkansas Council and our Chamber and our Education Foundation, CTE partnerships in our schools. Lookie here, what I found, Dr. Rollins. Parent engagement, that is a partnership that's worth a million dollars every day, is being able to have parents that will engage. That's the difference in a child sometimes being proficient, y'all, and non-proficient, is whether or not we can engage those parents. And our district has some challenges to always make sure we're crossing those barriers and engaging parents from various different backgrounds, cultures, experiences. And this just happened. And this was our outreach to our Marshallese patrons, parents and community. And my numbers were wrong, Dr. Rollins, but I heard 77. We had 77 parents and patrons come on Friday in the middle of the day and participate in an opportunity to help us learn how to better serve the needs of the students in our Marshallese population. That's a huge, huge step that we need to, that we will continue. Our student-centered programs, not going to go deep on this, but you know, our reading initiative, reading and writing initiative, it's the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project. It's research-based and grounded in our K-5 grades. Advanced programs, we touched on that. Any questions before I move on beyond that? Mr. Rollins did a great job going over all that, so I don't feel like I'm needing to touch on that again. That would be redundant. Our student-centered programs, programs for our English language learners. And, you know, I told you last year about our investment in a program for English language development and how that could help accelerate language development and actually support, once we develop the language, then it would actually help support the content area success. And this is where students are doing daily practice of foundational skills. And I have a chart to show you that shows us in our second year of assessing that with ALFA, English Language Proficiency Assessment, the outcome of that is great. Look at this. The very top, and this is, this is a last-year story. I put them together in cohorts. So the very top represents first-grade cohort last year, down through the graduating class of 2017. And the red demonstrates how that student, or group of students, did in the spring of 16. And then we're served through the program and have two data points for me to chart growth on through the spring of 17. Look at the growth that we experienced with those students. That's huge. This is around language proficiency.
So the class of '23 is the first group that had the...
The class of 2023, Jeff, I believe that is sixth, that would have been sixth grade last year, if my eyes are working right here. And that's where we heavily invested the ELD program. So you see, it's proving to be making a difference. So as a result, we're expanding that. That's a systematic program that we're expanding because we see the, you want to see a return like that on your time. And ultimately, you want to see the impact on the content area. You want to see that carry over and see the child grow on content area, subject area pieces on the ACT Aspire. Any questions about that? Student-centered programs, these are our supporting programs. Can't say enough about our pre-K. And we're right at, what, Dr. Rollins, 1,400?
We're pushing 1,400.
1,400. That is such a huge wise investment, especially the way that we structure our pre-K program. When I look, and I don't have a chart for you on this, but I will tell you, when I look at students that have gone through the Springdale pre-K program and look at multiple pieces of data when they arrive in the fall as kindergarten students and compare it against a group of kids similar to them that have not gone through a pre-K program at Springdale, you see measurable differences in their readiness. It may be simple readiness skills that, the early childhood skills that we look at, but it's huge when it charts the course for that child in the K-12 world. Makes a big difference.
Who is the largest? I'm surprised that we're not.
Would it be Little Rock, Dr. Rollins?
Little Rock's just below the head of us.
Yeah, we're going to beat them. I'll change that next year. We're going to beat them a whole.
I was just surprised.
I do, I hope.
Do we know that, because I was looking at a chart coming up that shows 1,700 total first graders. So we have 1,400 out of 1,700, so it's 300 that aren't in pre-K. Do we know if they didn't get...
Our enrollment numbers?
We have to remember, pre-K's three, fours and fives.
Yes. Thank you, Kelly, for helping me. It's not pure, yes.
Okay.
But that's a good, Jeff, that's a good point. That's a very good point. It feeds into it, but not purely into it. Okay? I want to talk about one student-centered program that I believe is making a difference. Conscious discipline. And I might miss this, but my understanding of conscious discipline is where students in the early grades are given opportunities to learn coping skills and behavior intervention strategies on how to deal with things differently than maybe they would normally deal with. And that's carrying forward. One of the pieces of data that we look at in our Race to the Top evaluation is out-of-school suspensions at grade five. Over the past three years, that's a non-academic indicator required to report to the USDOE as part of our grant piece. And over the past three years, the number of incidents resulting in out-of-school suspensions in grade five was dramatically reduced by 90%. Those incidents went from like 47 to 12 and then, then on the next year, from 12 to 4. So I believe that that program is making a difference in how our children are able to self-regulate behavior, possibly. Any questions about that? I'm required to tell you that we...
What are your thoughts on that? I mean, that's...
Oh, you would need to ask the elementary teachers for their direct thoughts on it. I did talk to one. I talked to Georgia's AP. I talked to George Elementary's AP and I said, Beth, tell me, what do you think is crediting what we're seeing as the progress being made? And she said, Mel, I think it's because of what skills they're learning around that conscious discipline in the early grades. It's helping them learn to cope with things differently. And she believed that that could be a major factor in why we're seeing a reduction. But remember, it's a different group of kids every year, too. It's a, it's a different cohort of kids each year when we look at that draw. And that can make a difference, too.
Will we check out that same bunch next year?
Well, I can. Track them as a cohort and tell you if they're, if they're staying on track. I sure can.
Or see if it's, everybody hits that when they hit fifth grade.
I sure can.
If you never told me, you know, wouldn't remember, but...
I will, though, Mr. Dotson. I will remember that and I will get that information for us. And we'll look at how that group of kids is performing. See if that stays with them as a long-term solution. So I'm required to let you know that we are all, as a district, every school and the district itself, fully accredited by the Arkansas Department of Ed for last year. We still have our accreditation status from our external agency, Advanced Ed. We are approaching 22,000 students in grades K through 12 as of October 2nd. The next screen shows you our demographic. And you know, if I don't look at the kindergartners as new to the district and I just look at grades one through 12, almost 12% of our students are brand-new to the district. 11.5 are completely brand-new to the district.
That's surprising.
There it is, broken out by grade level. I mean, of course, all kindergartners are new to the district unless they were retained, but... You also see our minority numbers are well above 50, 47, 57, plus to 59%.
So if the K is all new?
Yes.
And the total's 11%?
Mm-hmm.
Then there aren't, there aren't that many in one through 12? Is that right? Six hundred or something?
If you look at them overall and combining the one through... Those are new students to the district. They have never been in our district before.
But if the total's 11%, that would be, say, 2,200 students total.
That's exactly right, Jeff, that are brand-new.
If 1,700 are K...
We're not counting them.
Okay, that's not...
No, it's like 2,200 other students. That's exactly right. So what does that tell us? Lots of mobility, lots of adaptation, yes.
It's confirmed what you already know, isn't it?
And it's lots of opportunity to make a difference, is what it is. Lots of opportunity.
Are disability numbers percentage, is that fairly normal?
Those are normal. Most districts, I mean, Kendra, you may want to jump in here. 10% is considered within the norm across the state when we're looking at districts who maybe identify more than they should. So that's within the norm. There's not another district in the state that looks like this. Nowhere close.
In what way?
Numbers, well, Little Rock will look that way, but the demographics, the growth, yes, the changes. The new-to-district piece, English learners.
Are we still seeing them? I know the majority of Pacific Islanders here in Springdale, but are they spreading statewide by any chance at all?
You know, that's a good question, Ms. McFretridge. I was speaking with, one of my former teachers is superintendent at Pocahontas, Daryl Blackston, I call him Coach still. But we were talking at AIAA and he says, Mel, I'm getting some of your Marshallese students. I said, well, why are you getting my Marshallese student? And he said, we've opened a plant and they're employing a lot of your families.
Pick up boots.
Yes. And so they're, they're leaving us, they're transitioning to Pocahontas, Arkansas, which is about, well, it's about 45 minutes where I grew up, from Hardy, but it's probably every bit of a four-and-a-half-hour drive from here, wouldn't it be, Dr. Rollins? Just straight across the state on 412. But a lot of the families are going there and we sat, I think Annette Freeman and I sat together with him and visited with him about it. And he was trying to, he said, I'm needing some help. I'm needing some help with some strategies. And I said, well, I need you to help me with some strategies. You've, you know, we can share here. The only thing we're seeing happen a little bit is some, I call it popcorn-ing, where maybe that doesn't work out for that family and then that's, family's returning here and we're seeing students return here. So that's a transition, so that's never good, but we are seeing that. But honestly, Ms. McFretridge, other than that, Dr. Rollins, where would you say, or Kelly, the other population that's as fairly large as the DeQueen?
There's certainly a large concentration of Hispanic children in the DeQueen area.
She's asking about Marshallese, though.
Marshallese, a growing number, yes.
But they're not, they, they stay in a nucleus. And so I'm not aware of another growing community.
I'm just curious.
So talking to you briefly about academic achievement, we have two years of consistent achievement data, meaning same test, finally. So I put them out there by grade level and subject, English writing, reading, math and science, that our students in grades three through 11 tape. And here's the takeaway that I've given you from a district perspective at the bottom. When we examine performance category growth in each subject, we find that the percentage of students in grades four through 10, because remember, they have to have at least two years of data for me to see a growth. So that's why third's not in there. In grades four through 10, who advanced or grew by one or more performance level from 16 to 17, there are four performance level. A child is either needs support, close, ready or exceeding, with ready and exceeding being considered proficiency. So having said that, in English, we had 22% grow by one or more performance levels. Reading, 25%, writing, 38%, math, 23% and science, 23%. So this growth pattern across all testing subjects establishes an upward trend in your student achievement during the second year of administration in ACT Aspire.
There's little negatives in front of some of those. Is that, is it an error?
Where's the negative in front of one?
Can you get a footnote? It says, English is a positive 22%, readings a minus 25%.
I think that's just a dash.
Oh, no, 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 that's just a pause. It's not a negative.
Okay.
No, we have no, we do not have negative growth in that statement at the bottom. I'm so sorry. I should have said is. I will, so I will fix that tonight. Reading is 25% growth, writing is 38%, math is and science is as well. So that is not meant to be negative. That is meant to be is. Thank you for helping me.
That would be bad.
Grow. That would be bad. I wouldn't tell you that. But that's positive growth. That means a child is shifting upwards. They may not be proficient yet, but they're moving towards proficiency, guys. And that's, that's the, that's important to know. The takeaway on AP, which we've talked about a whole lot and you've had a whole focus on this, but if you look, we administered over 2,200 AP exams in our district and that does... and that does include School of Innovation. And these are the breakdown of who scored a five, or four, or a three. And these, these are scores that students can actually earn college-level credit for. And here's the takeaway. Forty-four percent of our students scored a three, four, or five this past year in AP, and that's an increase of three percentage points from the previous year. Three percentage points. It was forty-one percent last year. Any questions? Graduation rate, um, there's our district, there's Springdale High, there's Harbor High. It's always lagging. I don't have, I mean, we had graduates in seventeen, but they have not finalized the 2017 graduate data yet. They give us an opportunity to make appeals on it and get it straight. So I'll do everything I can to keep it high. Questions about that? That's my presentation for you on the annual report. We appreciate the partnerships that we have with our, we really appreciate the support of our board. That's a blessing. And the partnerships we have with our parents, patrons, and community members, and I'm trying to convey that message for Dr. Rollins as I stand here. Thank you as we continue to support and educate and prepare our next generation to the best of our ability. Thank you so much.
Great job. Great job.
I'm back again. This time I have the privilege of introducing about a third of my leadership Springdale classmates. They're scattered mostly in the back, but throughout the auditorium. I'm gonna ask everybody to stand up, and I'll read a list of who all's here and where they work very quickly. We have Captain Derek Hudson and Lieutenant Jeff Taylor with Springdale PD, James Smith with Public Works, Springdale Airport, Mark Fugaro-
Fugaro.
Thank you, with Rockline Industries, Marshall Rucker, Multicraft, Caroline Franco with the Jones Center, Luis Garcia with the City of Springdale, Vernon Tarver with Springdale Parks and Rec, and Matt Manley with Legacy National Bank. Thank you.
Did you not tell them I had a five-minute speech?
Thank y'all for meeting. I guess we'll have a day, Derek, in the spring. Our education, we always look forward to that. It's a very, very special experience for us. You guys will see a lot of our school district. And I, on the earlier board meeting, is pretty much a mirror image of what you're saying today. We love to get our kids in front of the board, don't we? To me, that's leadership development at, at the high school. Well, Kevin, do you wanna take, do you wanna stretch for a minute before we go further?
Yes.
All right, shall we proceed? So absolutely up to you. I say one thing, yes, down here. Y'all, y'all been there a long time. Thank you very much.
I'll ring the bell here in a minute.
I really covered much of the material, if not all, that's reflected in this project. So, this is not really new information, but we do need to talk about it some and we do need to take official action on this plan. You're very familiar with the state partnership funding model. You know that we go through an extensive planning process. I'll give you a number that will get your attention. It's a projection, but it's the best data we have to date. When I talk with Kelly about it, I understand there may be some errors in it, but we're working through the process to look down the road as far as we can. Over the next decade, our district's projected to grow about 7,000 kids over the next decade. So, you're seeing a revival of construction in the area. You're seeing new businesses being created that support that plan, perhaps that will be impacted by additional providers in the area, which we may not know about at this point in time. But, it's important that we plan and it's important that we use the partnership opportunities we have to save the resources that we have to serve all kids. So, this partnership funding piece is pretty close or pretty important. I want to talk about two, three projects that are central. There'll be a number of renovations and adjustments such as roof replacements and so on and so forth that obviously are very important, but I'm going to focus our time, Mr. Ollmey, tonight on two or three projects. Just a quick history, you know the SOI is already planned. Monies have been approved for that. We're in the design phase now. We'll see that brought to you at our work session when we meet in November. Okay. You know that the elementary projects that are underway have already been approved, planned, budgeted, that's underway. The athletic projects at Springdale High School are underway and being completed. So, this is looking at the next page, if you will. We're looking at an elementary school. In prior conversations, either Dr. Cleveland, myself, have talked about an opening of a new elementary school in 2019 or 2020. For our conversation today, let's talk about 2020. Okay? 2020, if you will. All right. I'd like for you to be aware that we're projecting that we will need a second new elementary school in 2022. So, where will they go? All those conversations that we've had and some informal conversations. I continue to look at the next elementary, the 2020 school, to be on the east side of town. And so, we'll be working at a site, et cetera, to clarify that. I continue to be with landowners and individuals that perhaps can help us with that side option. And as a matter of fact, I've got another meeting on November 7th to try to clarify that issue further. Whatever we do, we have to work in partnership with the city. We could have a land or a philanthropist donate land to us, if you would. And if the city placed requirements on us that superseded the value of that property, then that in itself could be problematic. So, location of a school, access, infrastructure, that sort of thing is really very, very important. We've learned a lot of lessons about septic systems. I don't think we want to go back down that road unless we just have no other choice. So, two elementary schools are part of this project, one in 20, one in 22. Now, if the variables change and we don't need to build any schools, then we can adjust our plan. But again, you've got to put it out there, the state's got to consider it. It's going to be really interesting now, and I've told you repeatedly, and you were in the audience, many of you, and you heard the governor tell you personally, that the state's ability to sustain the partnership funding over time was very marginal. Y'all remember that conversation? So, we don't know what that'll look like in future years. That's why we moved on this phase, phase two, so aggressively, because the state was in a position to help us with that. Normally, and given you and I visited this morning, let me say it again for the board as a whole, if, if a project is funded, and let's just say that's a $100,000 project, and the term is always what the state will approve, of that $100,000, if the state agrees and approves it, they normally will fund about, let's say, 40 something, 43, 44,000 of the $100,000, and just to extend that. So, about 43% of the approved funding, the state will pay. The district has to pay the balance. So, we've got to bring a funding mechanism forward, even with these elementary schools, make sure we can cover our end of the equation. We're loosely projecting that an elementary school, typical nap elementary, for example, would cost, by the time we get it on the ground, about $18 million. So, apply that 43% or better yet, the 60-something percent that are, that we'd have to come up with, and you get a feel for what I'm talking about. Y'all clear on that? Okay. I know there's a lot of interest in the room regarding Southwest Junior High School, and I could not agree more, but we can't do that on our own. We've got to wait and get in line on the partnership funding piece. So, we're working very closely with our architect and design modes now to try to bring that forward. So, those two new elementary schools are on our minds. Improvements at each of the schools, when we can get in line for the Southwest Junior High project, I expect that to be in the $5 to $7 million range with us paying about 60-something percent of that cost, et cetera. We're also very interested in doing some things at Central. We have done a lot at Central, but there are other needs at the school. The problem with, with that particular deal is whether or not the state will participate unless we're building what classroom space. If we, we want to put a new entrance on the school, et cetera, the state is not inclined to support that sort of thing, and that's a real need of that facility. So, any questions about this projected facility plan that's conveyed on page 58? Kevin, if the board is generally comfortable with that planning model, knowing that we are positioned to adjust it if the numbers don't materialize, I would ask you to pass the resolution on page 59, which is a part of the partnership funding model.
I move to pass the resolution on page 59.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Dotson, second. Mr. Williams, a resolution for lack of support of six-year 2018 master plan, academic facilities partnership program for 2019 to '21 funding cycle, Springdale School District. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
In front of you, you should have a preliminary agenda for our November school board administrative work session. I want to move now to just some miscellaneous items to kind of help get us all thinking about important issues that are in front of us. Y'all have that? Okay. Of course, we will hold to our half-day work session, which certain people have asked for. You remember? But I will try to make sure it's packed, if I can get it for you. How about that? Okay. So, we'll start about 11:30 on the November 14th date. And if you look at item two, discussion of the 2018 preferred date for school elections. Now, Thursday evening, the regional school board meeting is being held in P. Ridge. Have y'all, you know, there's two events that evening. There's the Springdale Education Foundation Cornerstone Event, there's this regional school board meeting. How many will be going to the regional school board meeting? Let's start with that. Kevin's going.
Me, myself, and Mr. Witter were going, for sure.
That's two representatives, that's great. How many are we going to the cornerstone event? Have y'all thought about that? Well, the cornerstone event, they both start same time, et cetera. I understand it's 6:00, 6 o'clock at the Malco, and that should be a nice event, and I've got a part on that program. So, I will stay here and go to the cornerstone event, and Kevin and Mike will represent us at the ASBA. And Mr. Hayes is going, and I told Kevin today, if y'all want to get together and write, I know they'd welcome that, Kevin. P. Ridge, that time of day, I thought maybe leave a quarter to five, something like that, Kevin, probably? Start, that's what you're thinking, something like that? Okay. All right. So, the preferred election date, there are different opinions about the preferred election These are the options, as I understand it today, and so Kevin, I expect that will be a major topic up there, but we, for 2018, we can look at the date of May 22nd, or if the board chose, we could go to November 6th to the general election date. Now, we need to decide what our position is, certainly by the January board meeting, in order to line up with the calendar events, et cetera. So, I think you'll have good-
We'll have that in November, then, probably.
We'll have good conversation in November and try to decide it in the regular meeting that, that evening, if that's okay with y'all. I won't go, I don't think there's any need to go any further with that right now, because we'll have plenty of our potential, so. 22nd of May or November 6th, decide by the January board meeting. Y'all okay? All right. Okay. I want to take you to the third item that we're going to need to discuss at our work session that's important. So, why am I telling you about it now? Reason being, in order to get on the state board calendar, we have to do some things in advance of our meeting, which is becoming a typical scenario, I understand. I'm working with the districts in our co-op area, and this idea of when to start school is really important. It's important so that we finish the first semester in a timely way. It's important that we do as much as we can in order to get as much teaching and learning in place prior to the dead of winter, but go all the way down that pathway. There's another very, very tangible influencer of this decision, our NSLA monies, which come to us in significant amounts to serve our high-poverty students. We need time from the start of school in order to give the opportunity for the grace period that's available for students to continue to eat even though they haven't completed their paperwork. Beyond that, we've got to have a week or so to have any chance to get latent applications processed in order to hopefully qualify for NSLA monies. This represents millions of dollars to this district to support our needy children. We have, in my opinion, and I don't want to be too dramatic here, I don't think I need to be, but we need to ask a waiver from that starting date. Currently, schools slated or plan to start across the state on the 20th of August. We need to ask for a waiver from the State Department to move that back to the Monday prior to, which would start on August 13th, which is very similar to what we did this year. I think we started this year on August 14th. But from the idea of letting that just stand without trying to get time to process NSLA something, we can't do that. I need you to know that we're going to be processing that with the other districts and the co-op, and we will have to have a letter of approval from the board. I hope I've given sufficient information for you to understand why we need to ask to start school on the 13th as opposed to the 20th. But let me stop and say, Michelle, questions?
I just know that that's a huge issue with parents as far as every year, when we go back to, you know, early, like everybody was looking at this year figuring, filling up was so early. I don't know that all of our parents quite understand the ramifications across the board.
I'm sure they don't.
I think that we're going to need to educate possibly more, but on the flip side of that also is what, I mean, what are our teachers saying? I mean, how are they feeling about-
We've not, we've not surveyed staff at this point, and I, again, I don't think we're asking for anything different than what we did this year. So, it's not a dramatic change in any sense, but if we don't do that, I can assure you there'll be a dramatic change, because services to children require dollars that are NSLA-supported. There's no other way to get the money.
But you have to go backwards to ensure we have enough time to get that data captured.
That's, I think, moving it back a week gives us a chance. If I heard your question-
Because you're trying to get an end date, that you get your information gathered and submitted.
Exactly.
Which is-
That gives, well, it gives us about a week beyond the compliance period in order for us to have a chance to get this NSLA identification complete. If we don't do that, we're right up against it without frankly, any leverage to cause reluctant parents or students to just complete the paperwork.
And we're the only district that's really at that 70%?
Well, we're, we're obviously in a unique position in Northwest Arkansas because of that, but for reasons even other than NSLA, which I've referenced, I think every district in Northwest Arkansas will ask to have the starting date moved back to at least the 13th. Kevin, I thought maybe you were asking, is the 13th enough time? And it's a push, but trying to find the balance between that early start and at least what we've experienced is kind of what's caused us to settle on that date.
This year, it's keeping me from making a statement that, you know, why, whoever you submit it to, why wouldn't they give you another week on the flip end of it? That's all it was. But we're taking the necessary steps to advance it earlier, so we can get it-
I think so.
-before we hit those.
Is it the difference between asking from the state versus asking for federal?
I'm sorry, I'm not-
Well, he was asking, why couldn't we get a, why weren't they giving another week longer for, for students?
It's federal.
And so, that's what I was saying. I said, what difference between asking for timeframe from state, whereas we're needing to turn the paperwork into federal, so it's not.
It is, it is an unbelievable task to get 70% of 23,000 kids to complete their application in a timely manner. And that only happens because teachers and principals make it a priority because they know that funding of educational services depends on those state dollars. If you want to, if you want to look at, if you want to put it in context, you look at our millage rate versus neighboring millage rates, and you understand the differential in dollars that are generated by our NSLA monies, that's been the buffer that's allowed us to stay in the game when districts around us have eight to 10 more mills than we do. You understand what I'm saying? So, you just can't pass on that. You, you have to make the adjustments necessary to allow us to do that.
We're in the bottom third.
Yeah, 100% I understand that. I'm just saying, I-
But that, maybe that would help, help us explain that start date.
In all honesty, short of that, we would have to be looking at additional help from our local patrons, if you don't question.
Okay, if it starts too early, we get out, or, right?
Yeah, that's true.
Well, and I noticed some of our neighboring districts had a couple of days of a fall break, so we really looked at, at possibly doing something like that, so, you know.
Okay. We, we won't make that decision tonight. I just put it in front of you so you could do exactly what you're doing and think about the issues and questions that may need to be answered. That's very, very appropriate, and we need to do that. It's just that the magnitude of the question is something that we've got to explore, and we understand that. All right. So, this November work session, items one and two are very, very important, one, two, and three. If you look at four, although you, you kind of heard a generic plan, I need for you to go back and understand that we're looking at a major addition to the School of Innovation. I'm expecting an investment of about $35 million for construction of what could be somewhere between 175 and 200,000 square foot addition of that school. Since we met last, we've been highly invested with the business community, representatives from corporate Northwest Arkansas, great deal of interest, just like you heard here tonight, on career preparedness, college readiness, et cetera, and having a facility that can continue to personalize teaching and learning like we've seen over these first four years. So, this is major. We'll begin to look at different options on the design feature. You've heard me talk repeatedly about wanting to have an agriculture center at this new school, the Don Tyson Ag Center. We are now looking at that design, probably a facility in the neighborhood of 20,000 to 25,000 square feet. For a long time, we looked at trying to push those high-tech, or, excuse me, those hands-on labs into the academic facilities of the, of the phase two of the SOI. As we met with the business community, representatives from industry, they have said repeatedly, we need our standalone building for the labs, such as animal science, plant science, mechanization, diesel mechanics. You can see how that might be an issue, trying to push those, that type of lab with the activities and noises and smells, et cetera, up next to the auditorium in this new facility. So, a standalone facility makes all the sense in the world, and we've anticipated that for a long time, that I really want the business community to have a voice. It'll be interesting to see how it works, but of the business community, I believe, will be full partners with us in the equipping and perhaps even helping some with the construction cost of this ag facility. So, let's say that's 25,000 square feet. Let's say then that we were looking at a 200,000 holistic plan. If you pull that out, then we'd make adjustments in the other to accommodate that additional space. We're not increasing the size of the school, we're just looking at specialty areas, one with hands-on, quote, dirty labs, if you will, as opposed to maybe the arts and so forth that might be associated with the academic space in, in the new addition. Those are things you're going to want to see, you're going to want to know about, and I think we'll be very prepared to talk with you about that by the work session date. And then we'll come back and look at where we are in terms of progress with the existing projects, which I've already referenced, plus potential design features of these new schools, where they might be located, what the projected enrollments are. If you follow the growth, and I know some of you are out there every day, and you've got a good handle, Kevin and I talked about this this morning, Randy and I have talked about it for a long time, but you see the housing divisions, you see the apartment complexes, you see the corporate investment that certainly is beginning to revitalize and come forward. So, I think we'll have a very productive day on the November work session, and then we've, we've devoted a substantial amount of time to come back and build on what you've seen this afternoon in terms of the instructional piece. Any questions, Kevin, about this agenda?
What was the date for the November?
It's the 14th of November. From 11:30 to 4:30 is our work session. Short break and back at it for our November board meeting. Okay. So, we talked about school board, election dates, potential calendars, waivers for the start of school, construction, and instruction, so that ought to be good. Let me just kind of pull a couple of things together for you, because I know many of you are running very hard, and you may have, you may have picked up on this, or you may not. You've heard this Marsalise reference already. The picture over here is really a beautiful thing from my point of view, and the reason I say that is because as a team, we've worked so hard to try to figure out ways to connect with the Marsalise community. This was a beautiful experience on Friday. I told the principals repeatedly, they deserve all the credit, and I mean that, for getting those parents there and the kind of conversations that took place, it wouldn't surprise you at all. The kind of conversation that came forward from the Marsalise community mirrored what we would experience with Hispanic community, frankly, mirrored what we would expect from the Caucasian community when you bring it forward. The American dream is a very, very powerful and important concept, and those families know that the way to have their own is through education. And we got more affirmation of that on Friday than we've ever seen. I want to thank you for adjusting the board meeting. I know Randy had some things that he needed to accomplish, and I'm very excited about the experiences he had as a result of that. But we moved the board meeting from the regular date in October to allow our team to participate in the National Family Literacy Conference in Tucson. Our team did an absolutely phenomenal job. We had five different presentations at that national conference. If you had seen, if you'd seen it, I think you would have been elated about the work of our teachers and principals, Dr. Bridgeforth and her team. It was something extremely special. Springdale was highlighted in every general session, every special function. Our people were invited to be a part of it. I've told you repeatedly, we've got the largest family literacy program in the country today, and the National Family Literacy Center was a big part of that from day one. If you remember, Lee and M. Dillon Jones, Toyota Grant, the Family Literacy Center, they were right at the, right at the center. Sharon Darling still directs that center and has helped us every step of the way as we continue to grow. I was really pleased to hear Ford Arkansas come forward this evening. I think that initiative can take a similar approach. It's just partnerships, partnerships, partnerships. Okay. Any questions about any of that? So, thank you for allowing us to move the agenda to accomplish that. We're clear on our work session, we're clear on the cornerstone event. We have better information about, at least preliminarily, what we're looking at for the work session. Mr. President, anything I have not covered as we visited about it this morning? Are you comfortable with where we are?
I cannot find anything that we've talked about, that we haven't already talked about.
I think we've kind of done it. I think we've kind of done it. All right. If there are no further questions, I'll yield, and we'll move on to the next section of the agenda. Mr. Hayes, that appears to be you, if you can come forward.
Well, good evening, Board. I have several items for you this evening. The first item for your consideration is the building projects financial update. You will notice that Childers Nap project has a balance of zero. We did make the final payment on that during the month of September, so we will remove that from this worksheet. Then you see the other projects, making monthly draws on those, so they're proceeding along.
Kelly, on the nap cost, is that net of state?
Is that what?
Is that net of the state funding? It's just our-
No, it's not. But it's, but it's just the portion that is applicable to the elementary portion, not the pre-k portion.
So, we're talking about 18 million for a new elementary, it would be inflation for this?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question. That's the total cost for Childers Nap.
Total.
For the building, for the building, yes.
So, if we're looking at a new school, it's 18 million, that would be inflation from this point?
Right. That's correct. Yes.
And I sure hope that's way overestimate. We'll see.
Probably gets padded in.
We'll see.
Board, the next item that I have for you, according to Act 1120 of the 89th General Assembly, we are to report by October of each year, a report that compares earnings for the two prior years, and any individual that had an increase of more than 5% is presented to the board in a report. So, you have had that in your information. What, what I'm sure is, if you looked at it, what we see is that, you know, someone got docked in the first year, or they started late in the first year, or there's a number of people on here that were substitutes. They just subbed, subbed more in the second year than they did the first year. Or, same way with timesheet that work on an hourly basis. So, there's a lot of folks on this about what, I think there was seven or 800. So, I do, I would ask that the board consider passing a resolution to approve this report. And it's similar to prior, previous years, they're quite lengthy. They're quite lengthy.
144,000 percent interest.
How about that? How about that?
Wow. Amazing.
I move that we pass this resolution on page 91.
A motion by Mrs. McFetrich, and a second by Mr. Dotson, to approve the resolution in compliance with Act 1120 of the 89th General Assembly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for that. The next item that I have for you is a, I would ask that you consider passing a resolution. As you know, anytime we deal with a company that has an employee who is related to that company, then we have to disclose that in an open board meeting. So tonight, I bring before you our employee is Jana Reed, and Jana Reed is married to Joe Reed, who is a corporate officer of Ready Ruder. So as you know, they do some plumbing work for us on a contracted basis, and so need to disclose that relationship.
I'll make a motion to approve the disclosure.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hudson, and a second by Mrs. McFetrich, for the approval of the disclosure act.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. The next item that I have for you, as a public entity that sells, or that has bonded debt, we are required on a regular basis to send out our financial status to parties that are interested in that. So up until now, we've paid a third-party vendor to do that because it's, because it's been pretty restrictive as to who could perform this service for us. So we've been paying a $2,500 fee per year for someone to disseminate our financial information out to the parties that need to have that information. First Security Beardsley can now perform that, that service for us, and has offered to do that for our district with no additional fee, so it's going to save us the $2,500. And I would ask that the board consider passing a resolution to name First Security Beardsley as the company that will be handling our continuing disclosures.
Second. Motion by Mr. Dotson, second by Mr. Hudson, to approve First Security Beardsley Public Finance as our district's disclosure dissemination agent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then the final item that I have for you are the financial statements for the month of September. Let me call just a couple of things quickly to your attention. I'll sound like a broken record all year, but the state of Arkansas changed the way that we receive our state foundation funding this year, and instead of 11 installments, which we've always received, we now have 12. So we, we've received an extra payment, even though they just divided it into 12 pieces rather than 11. And so all year, you're going to see that our revenue is going to be slightly ahead of where we were last year, so that gap will, will close, hopefully not too much, but that's why our revenue is ahead of where we were this time last year. And then our expenses are pretty close to where we were last year, slightly ahead in terms of a little lower percentage, so we're in good shape. Any questions for me?
I'll make a motion to approve the financials as submitted.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hudson, and a second by Mrs. Cook, to approve the monthly financials as submitted.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome, Cory.
I'm glad to be here with you all this evening. I feel, well, I missed you guys, I missed y'all last month, but SEA has been really busy in October, and I'm so excited to share some of the things we've been doing with you all tonight. We have been working really closely with our building representatives to increase our membership so that we can build our membership before election and continue to support candidates who have the best interests of public schools at heart. In fact, Ms. Pearson did a training with us today, and each time she hosts a training, we see more new faces, so that's always really encouraging. This past Saturday, Springdale was very well represented, and we had four teachers sent to be delegates on the Arkansas Committee for Children in Public Education, and I am happy to say that I was elected to be on the executive board to represent Northwest Arkansas on that. So I am looking forward to having my seat at the table. And, and yeah, thank you. We have been working really hard, this is what I'm most excited about, we've been working really hard with Ms. Cooper at Parsons Hills to implement a service project for them, and we have partnered with students, art students at the Harbor High School, and they have created stencils, and we will be painting "Growth Mindset" quotes on their, the sidewalk of their front entry, so that when students come to school, they will have some encouraging words to see and read, to start their day off with a positive attitude. And the high school students have really enjoyed helping us with this, and they have made the stencils in English, in Spanish, in Marsalise, so I think it'll be a really great project. We're going to get together on Saturday, and we'll meet and paint, we're going to grill out, and just brighten it up and spread some cheer, so y'all are welcome to come if you want to help us paint. But it's been, it's been a really fun month in SEA, so thank you very much for letting me be here. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, we are looking forward to December and the, and the state school board meeting, and we need to think about the delegate assembly and who the board would like to represent them there. I don't know, you might begin to look at your schedule and see if that would work for you. If that's a problem, then maybe somebody else could help us as well, so. We do need to notify ASBA, you know, right about that? I'm pretty sure that we need to tell them who we did.